All right, September 25th session of the Park Township Planning Commission is in session. First item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Anybody have any changes they'd like to see made? If not?
We've moved that we accept the agendas, present support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Second item is the approval of the minutes from our August meeting. Does anybody have any changes that they've seen that they'd like to?
And I believe you have to update the vote count to six instead of seven because I was absent last week. So that would be page, page one under item two and item three and then on page 12, item 10.
All right. Any other changes?
Yes, on page five, the very bottom line. It said Mr. Hoyt stated that they extensively did something with staff on this particular issue. And my guessing may talked or conversed or something, but the word conversed or talked is missing.
Okay, this was, can you?
This was page five, bottom line, starting with Hoyt stated.
Oh, I got you that they extensively, okay.
Extensively did something.
Probably conferred.
Yeah, but that'd be a good word.
Okay. Mika conferred sound good?
Sounds great.
Okay. Any other changes?
Support.
All in favor?
Right.
All right. Very good. So tonight we have a number of things on our agenda. The first of which is going to be a public comment, a couple of comments on public comment. We have two public hearings specific to cemetery ordinance tonight and also to the Trillium Grove site project. So if you have any comments specific to those two things, if you would hold those until we get to the public hearings for each of those, each of those applications. Okay, I'd appreciate that. If we do have public comments, now is your time to speak your piece. We have three minutes for each individual. If you have something you'd like to say, step up to the mic and sign them please. Anybody on the left side?
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned that there's two public comments for
Those two items, what about the McTow Park item? Are there public comments for that?
That would be that, that if you have comments around that specifically, you would want to speak to that now. So if you have comments or you need to put it in.
I'll, I'll speak to that now then.
Okay.
Thank you. So my name's Dirk Walcott and our family resides at 2421 Crescent Walk. I spoke at the last meeting that this was presented. And I think I mentioned before that from my perspective, this item really should have been, at least for our property, an administrative review. It's somewhat insignificant adjustment to the PUD. I ran some calculations and our property specific to Doug DeHan, the trust property is point zero zero two percent of the overall acreage of that parcel. If you calculate it to the overall parcel of the PUD, it's point zero 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 one percent. And so I would look at that as a minor adjustment, not a major adjustment. I understand it was asked that Doug and his group were asked to put everything together once so that the PUD could be modified once, not multiple times, which I understand. However, this situation and the extension that this has caused has caused a significant loss of value in terms of the sale of our home. We've lost a potential buyer for this. And so we would appreciate a decision tonight. One way or the other, we would hope you would approve it because we feel that the modifications that are being proposed actually cleans up quite a bit of property mess, which is kind of typical of that area. And so to clean this up, I think most of the cottagers would appreciate that value. And we're also, obviously, none of us are planning to use this in a different way. It's just an adjustment in boundary for the same use. And all of us out there appreciate the greenery and the beauty of the, of the area. So we would appreciate if council would approve this tonight. And so that we could all move on with the things that we need to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else on the left side? Okay, seeing none, anyone on the right side? Okay, everybody's staying seated, so I'll take that as the end of the public comment period. We'll go ahead and close that. We are going to have a public hearing on a revision, major revision to the cemetery ordinance. We're going to need to, as it is a public hearing, we'll need a motion to open and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Mika, do you want to make a few comments and set this up?
I can, and we also have one of our sextons here this evening, if you'd like to ask other questions of him. So this is a revision of the cemetery ordinance. It's mainly an update, two, two kinds of sections of it. It's an update, it was written many, many years ago. And some of the practices that are in this section of the ordinance haven't been the practice for some period of time. So it's partly to update to current practice. And then the other piece of it is incorporating new best practices in cemetery management, as well as accommodating for the columbarium, which is a, a structure that's used for cremated remains, which is going to be installed sometime. At the Lakewood Cemetery, there have been some supply chain slowdowns in getting that in. But the ordinance doesn't say anything as far as with the columbarium and the regulation to that. So those are the three items that are going to be incorporated into the existing cemetery ordinance.
Great, thank you. Let's have the review of the ordinance.
Did you want others to speak or did you want?
I, I think the, yeah, the individuals that I think put it to, I, I can, I can speak to. I guess we could talk about the changes that have been made and specifically what they're addressing. I think the folks that put it together, if they want to kind of provide, I know we did that at the last meeting, but a lot of folks weren't here, I think would be helpful.
I'm Dave Martin, I'm one of the, our cemetery sextons. And as, as Mika said, there's really a couple of reasons we had to do this. One was just to update the language and up to our current practices. And in addition to that, we were, we have been looking statewide at what the recommendations are for cemeteries, for ordinances, and to come in line for the township of excellence that we're trying to achieve. There were some recommendations and we've incorporated those. And I would probably say the, the two biggest changes that we're trying to get to a point where we we're running out of cemetery space. So we want to make sure that as we go forward, as people purchase burial sites, we know who's going to be buried in those sites. So we've asked them to name the people. Some people buy two plots, we've had people in the past buy four plots or eight plots. And then we get 20, 30 years down the road and those, many of those plots are not used. And so we also incorporated a way that we might be able to recover some of those plots to be able to offer them to other people since they're not going to be ever used. And there's a process in there for achieving that. And with the columbarium, because that's a unique structure specifically for cremation burials, and it's an upright structure. The we had to address the issues of what size urn you could put in there? How you can, what kind of inscriptions can be on the front of the open niche? It's only a one foot by one foot space. So there's a limitation on the lettering and, you know, the date and, a date of birth and date of death. And limitation there is that we can only have two urns inside each one. So we have to specify all that to make sure there's not any misunderstanding as we go forward. So I'll answer any questions if you've got something specific about the language or anything like that.
I, thank you. I thought it was really well put together.
I know I have to give the credit to Mike Mitchell, who wrote, did most of the writing.
Okay, well, thanks to both. This is, when it comes to, when it comes to the requirements around this, I think the two of you are the, are definitely our local experts, and I think have done a really nice job on the amendment. So thank you for that. Questions from anyone on the planning commission on this or feedback? Oh, that's right, we have a public, public hearing on this as well. So are there any comments or questions or feedback from any of our residents that are attending? All right, I think they're happy with it as well, so thank you.
Motion to both public hearing?
I think we're, yes, I'll, I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is there, is there a need for a, for a vote on the amendment itself or it's been approved at this point?
This cemetery amendment, you would recommend approval to the township board?
To the board, okay.
If you wanted to approve it, I'm making an assumption.
Yes, I think, I think we would. So I will go ahead and make the recommendation for approval to the board. Would anybody second that? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, it sounds like? Thank you. Good job again, thank you very much.
That will be on the agenda on the October 9th meeting and it'll all, it'll be in the packet that goes to the board of government.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, may I have a moment?
Yes.
So while we have Mr. Martin here, I don't know if we were going to stay through the rest of the meeting or not. And I was going to save my comment for the end, but on Monday I attended the Civil Air Patrol graduation ceremony, our loving Veterans Memorial. They wanted to make sure that we cast along to you their sincerest thanks for how Lakewood Cemetery is organized and the great job they've helped and also Mr. Mitchell with regard to setting up their wreaths across America, the activity that they have, so they wanted to relay that to you.
Thank you.
Then pass that along to Mr. Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have, we did close the public hearing, but I, thank you. Next item is the amendment to the existing PUD for Point West. And I suspect there'll be some speakers that'll want to get up and talk a little bit about that. So this is not a public hearing, so there's no, no need for opening and closing this. If you're ready, let's try to keep this to, at least for commentary, additional commentary to three minutes. Please direct the feed, the comments to the chair and we'll hope, we'll hope to be able to have some progress on this tonight, so.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to introduce it first? Because I think they might want to respond if I say something, they might want to. Yeah, respond to that, so. Um, I think first I'll just talk a little bit about the, the major versus the minor amendment to the PUD. That's something that we've had some conversation about as well. We talked about this pretty extensively with legal counsel too. Because of the, the way that this P, a couple of things, one is the way that this PUD is set up. It's a little bit more complex than a typical PUD is. And one of the things that's very unusual about it is that this open space has been held privately. Typically, this is a common element that's held with the neighborhood entirely. In this case, it was owned by, it continued to be owned by the person, the individual who had developed the property. And it was in private ownership. It's unusual, it's not forbidden, the ordinance allows that. And that was one of the things that we were evaluating, you know, as we were continuing to discuss, is even the past couple of weeks. And the ordinance does permit this then to be split into multiple pieces. So that's not something that's not permitted. One of the things that came up over the past week as we were reviewing this among staff and bringing in some additional staff as well, was that there is a section, I mentioned this at the very end of the memo, that refers to undivided permanent open space. And so as I was writing the memo, we're looking at this and discussing it in the middle of it as well. And that's not relevant to this. There is a specific section in our ordinance that is for open space development. And it's, it's like a subset of a PUD, but it's in a completely separate section. So again, something to review as we're looking at our zoning ordinance, but it's not applicable there. So this is able to be split in that way. But it is very unusual to have an open space part under private ownership and then also split into separate pieces. And so that's really why that major amendment was, was necessary. And I think as we continue to talk that you might see a little more what, what that entails. Going to the requests of the planning commission at the last meeting that this, that this was heard at, so two months ago. At that point, the planning commission requested a forest, a forest maintenance agreement. And instead, the applicants provided a few additional documents that were different than that, said, hey, we should use these in place of the forest maintenance agreement. So two things about that. The forest maintenance agreement itself, I was talking to somebody at the Ottawa Conservation District in the last couple of days as well, is probably too large a document to be applicable to a parcel this size. So they're usually looking at something that's 25 to 50 acres in size and evaluating it over, you know, 50, 100 years. It's, it's a long-term plan for forest maintenance and is probably more in-depth than the planning commission needs. And also, the applicant is likely to have a very difficult, if not impossible, time finding someone who's willing to put together an agreement for something that's that small. So that type of maintenance agreement is probably not the direction to go. Having something, however, that's very specific as to what is required, is recommended. Staff, we can't do interpretive, we, we take what you say and we say, this is how this applies. And so the, we, we may be doing some interpretation of what your direction is, but we're not going, you know, way over here, we're trying to interpret it as directly as we can. So we need to have some clear direction on, on what specifically it is that you would be looking for. One of the other things that legal counsel found in the past couple of weeks was the section that I put on your dais here. So that was, we talked about that after your memo had gone out, which is in the PUD section itself, there is a section that talks about having a guarantee of maintenance of dedicated open space, so an open space maintenance agreement. Mr. Martin had planned to be here this evening, but he's unwell and he was not able to be. So I'll transmit to you as much as I can. Tom was in a call with him, with me earlier today, talking about what sort of thing that should entail. So the ordinance, the, the state regulates the dune, but the ordinance requires this maintenance agreement. It's something that should be indicating that the people are going to, that ownership will maintain. He recommended using language jointly and severally maintain. And it does need to be, it does need to be recorded as a deed restriction. So this is in, in open spaces of the neighborhood. It can be owned by multiple people, but it's not something that can be fenced, it's not something that can be closed in. It's, it's still part of that, that neighborhood element. Let's see, make sure that I hit all of my notes here. I believe those were all of the new items I had, so. I'll pass it off to you.
Okay, thank you. With that, let's jump in.
We're back to Greg Rad with Nederbilt. So I'm the historian, I think, a little bit on this being part of the original PUD development with Point West. And I want to provide a little, little contextual color around the unusual nature, right, of open space on this particular PUD and, and what was done here. So towards the end of this approval in 2011, the planning commission started to negotiate some view sheds and boat slip areas and wanted to make sure that there was a, a green space left open at the end over Lake McTow. And the PUD ordinance that this project originally went through did not have any open space or green space provisions within the standard PUD. There were those open space preservations and clusters, but it wasn't part of this. And so the board said, hey, we like the boat slips, but keep them to the north and the south, keep on the edges and make sure there's a view shed out the middle. And the, the commission then also said, and by the way, we'd like you to have 20% of the area as green space. So that was a recommendation. And they put a formula right in the PUD resolution, how to calculate that 20%. And so the condition of approval was that we prepare that map. And that map, I think you had in the packet and I have some of those to hand out. This was the map that we prepared indicating that 20%. And so the, what this map shows is in order to calculate that, the area per the formula, is we didn't look at the whole nine acres. You had to take the five acres of flatland, of buildable area. It specifically said exclude the hillside, exclude the 20%, 25%, exclude critical dunes. Only look at the, the, the flat area where you can develop. And so that five acres, we applied that formula to it, kind of with the green space. And I think the number is, yeah, 34% in that area. And so that is then why the condominium and the association is just on the five acres, because it meets all of the requirements of the PUD. It meets the open space requirements and everything was down there. And the hillside, which had to be excluded anyway at the 20, 20%, didn't need to be part of it. It was indicated on this map as additional, but it's clearly denoted as a, it was the red line around it saying it's, it's a different area. It's, it's additional, it's not part of that. And so the ownership was separate and that's just the way it was. So the, the project itself met all the requirements. And so that's when, when we came up for the lot line adjustment, we're like, well, this is just a separate parcel that is part of the PUD, but it's a separate parcel land and we just not creating any new parcels, right? We're just going to adjust some lot lines. So we had a little contention with whether it was a minor or major PUD. And we didn't actually think it was part of a PUD amendment because it's a lot line adjustment. It was really not part of any of the requirements for the PUD. That's, give you a little context on the background of what that is, so.
Thank you.
He's much taller than I am, so move this down. My name is John Anderson, I'm the attorney representing the Sherry Hell Dehan Trust, which is the owner of this parcel and the applicant here. I, I just wanted to, again, just really briefly maybe touch on this because application of the dedicated open space defined term tonight is kind of the first time that we're hearing about it and reacting to it a little bit. I would just mention that, you know, again, I didn't have the, the opportunity to talk with Township Council about this, so. Not to get into the weeds too far, but at this point, we're looking at the current ordinance, the current zoning ordinance, which was adopted several years after this PUD was put into place. So we're looking at these terms as they're used in the zoning ordinance adopted, and I want to say it was 2016, 2017, and trying to apply them to something that was initially approved back in 2011. And I think what, what Greg i- is saying is, when you look at the original PUD materials from 2011, that dedicated open space term was not used anywhere, was not set aside as dedicated open space. If we were thinking about what was the dedicated open space, that's going to be that area within the boundaries of the condominium that was set aside and kept open. This hillside area was, like Greg said, something extra, something additional. It was set aside as hillside area, as green space. But it was not dedicated in that 2011 PUD, in that resolution as dedicated open space. So I just wanted to kind of explain our thought process on that and, and why we have not been referring to that as dedicated open space. Because when this was created in 2011, that phrase didn't exist. So that's again, why we're asking for this sort of simple approach to this boundary line adjustment. And I kind of want to rewind then to last month when we were here and talked about the forest manager, forest management plan and sort of our plan for substitute conditions to address some of the concerns that were raised in July. Essentially, when we took a step back, talked with our consultants, we thought, okay, this is three acres or so. A forest management plan is really appropriate if, if somebody's going to be doing some heavy vegetation removal, something like logging. You're looking at what needs to be reintroduced in the event that substantial growth is pulled out. And here, we're not proposing any of that. Nobody's proposing any change to the physical nature of this area. Nobody's proposing any development, we're just talking about a change or adding lines to facilitate a change in ownership. And so we took a step back and said, okay, what can we provide as the applicant as part of an agreement or restrictions that we think makes sense to address the planning commission and the township's concern? And we came up with three sort of conditions. The first is that township already has a tree ordinance in place. Yes, it's not drafted as if it applies specifically to this three acre parcel, but it does have language in there that talks about if a developer wants to go in and pull out trees, what trees can they remove? If they remove them, what approvals do they need? If they remove them, they're allowed to remove them, what do they have to do to restore the area? We're suggesting that right now, even though that that ordinance does not apply to this parcel, we're saying, hey, let's make it a condition to approval from the township board that this parcel be subject to the township's existing tree ordinance. So that's the first condition. The second one was essentially that any cutting or removal of trees that anybody's doing here be done sort of in connection with Michigan's best practices. The State Arborist Foundation and State Forester Group has a set of best practices that says, you know, if you're going to come up with a plan to remove something, these are the things that you should keep in mind while doing that. We're suggesting that, hey, that anytime anybody wants to do that, they've got to keep those guidelines in mind. And then the third one was a bit reactionary to some of the comments from township staff and the township attorney that said, okay, this is a critical dune area. It's regulated very heavily by Eagle. Eagle is the state environmental organization that has critical dune areas exclusively when it's within its jurisdiction. And I think the conversation came up and said, you know, in the off chance that Eagle or that entity goes away, how do we know that somebody's going to step in and enforce this program as it's written? Because essentially what that program is, is it very specifically says what can and not can, can and cannot be done in such a steep, critical dune. And essentially, you have to go to the state for certain approvals anytime that anything drastic is proposed to be done. And when you do that, you prepare a plan called a vegetative assurance plan. You, you go through a whole process that addresses the health of the dune and, and what you're planning to do. And I think the township's position was, okay, what if that goes away? What if that process goes away? And what we're proposing is, you know, in the off chance that that state agency that regulates this critical dune area goes away, will allow this property to be bound by part 353, which is the state statute of those regulations. So that Park Township, if they want, can step in and enforce the laws as they're written today. So as that part 353 program is today, Eagle goes away, Park Township can step in and enforce that. So those, I just wanted to explain those three conditions because I think that that also dovetails with the discussion about whether we need a separate agreement here. I think that these three conditions can be baked into the township board approval. And of course, the township board can require us to do something like recording a document memorializing those. And again, I, I think that any standalone agreement at this point would just be a, a little overkill, given especially that this is not quote unquote dedicated open space under the original PUD. So I'm also going to go ahead and introduce Phil Johnson who's here. Phil is a naturalist that has a lot of experience with this particular property. He was involved back in 2011 with Greg when all these initial proofers were going. He's also very knowledgeable and experienced with respect to the critical dune regulations, how they were adopted, what their intent is and how that program works. I think Phil's going to give a bit of a, a brief introduction, but then also be available to address any very specific questions that you might have that an attorney probably isn't the best person to, to answer.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Hi, my name's Phil Johnson. That was quite an introduction. Hopefully I can live up to it, I'll be short and certainly any questions you have. I live in Grand Haven Township. I, I work with resource planning and design. Last time I was here was 2011. As I was saying to Greg, we both got a little gray, grayer and smarter, wiser. But so anyhow, thank you for, I was invited to come out and maybe give a little perspective on the dune law or answer, answer some questions. But historical perspective, my first look at this property was in 1989 when this, the critical dunes were designated and the site was still developed, if you will. The restaurant was there and the hillside building, for all of you who might remember, I'll, I'll refer to the hillside, this piece of ground. And it had that, what, five, six, seven story structure on it. Came back and looked at it in 94, again in 98 with the DNR. This is before, well, actually, we were DQ by that point, we became DQ in 94. And again, back in 20, 2010 or 11. Uh, and again, back in twenty, twenty-ten or eleven to confirm for the township where the limit of the critical doing area was and what impact. So those site visits I did with the agency and there's documents in the township's file regarding what can and can't be done with that, uh, piece of property. I can see you better with those off. Thanks. Um. Throughout the review process, when I was here, Greg did all the talking and I sat back in the corner because essentially nothing was being proposed in the hillside. Although the department at that point in time had authorized that if there was a request to rebuild the hillside building, that it could be accomplished within the footprint without a special exception. Um. I went back last week, Mika had commented about the conservation district. Uh, uh, we went out there together, Tracy and Jamie, the executive director, and we looked at it and I hadn't been in the development in years. I was pleased to find as I walked along the toe that it had successfully stayed the same. There hadn't been any impacts. So from a historical perspective, I can look back my forty-two years in the Sand Dune Protection Management Act, over thirty years on that property. Uh, not knowing the property owners above, seeing the plan develop, if you will, um, at the base of the dune as well as no proposal to put structures in there, that it's largely, um, stayed the same with a, a natural progression succession of the overstory. Um, there were some questions prior to the first submittal. I, I, I wrote a document about the preservation of that, that the woodlot, if you will, and the critical dune permitting process. And as, um, John just commented about a vegetative assurance. So just in short, any activity vegetation removal on that property would require a permit from the department. Now, whereas we have a tree ordinance here in the township, six inch tree, D B H requires a permit. Um, under the Sand Dune Protection Management Act, the critical dune law, we'll call it, it's a three inch D B H or any vegetative removal. Any application to the department requires a vegetative assurance plan be prepared. Thus, the conservation district and the original statute was essentially told that's who will do your vegetative assurance plan, lack of funding, so on, so forth. Uh, it's still required. So if anybody wanted to cut down a tree, there's some exceptions. It's leaning over your house or, you know, then you can get in there and do that, but it requires a permit from the state of Michigan. Um, as far as this hillside itself in my forty-two years, it's probably been the most looked at hillside because of these type matters. Hey, come out, tell us where the toe is, look at it. And I think largely that's why it stayed in its current state. There've been no pressures to develop it. Um, I've certainly received no requests since two thousand and eleven and walking behind the structures last week. The toe of the slope is still the critical dune area. There's not been any clear cutting. Uh, I work with the department every day and done thousands of permit applications. And I, I can't imagine anybody going in there and removing vegetation without notice and without response by the agency immediately. So if you have questions, I'm past my three minutes. Um, questions about the effectiveness of the critical doing area, I have every confidence based on what I saw last year that what continues into the future, regardless of the ownership pattern, as we're talking about property line adjustments. Um, I, I, I have every confidence and stand here before you that once this occurs, the boundary line adjustments, property line adjustments, it's going to continue in the decades ahead, um, without impact. So anyhow, five minutes there. Any questions? Certainly. I'll be right here.
Sure. I'll, I'll start with one.
Sure.
Um, you mentioned if a, a tree is creating a risk, uh, leaning over a home or um, that type of situation, that would require, um, essentially a permit from the state to be able to remove that.
If a tree was leaning over and
If it, if it was at risk of falling onto someone's property or damaging a home.
In your packet, there was a document, uh, it's a policy, W R D Water Resource Division zero zero eight. It was a de minimis list we created back in nineteen ninety-four. This law was written, as you see it in your pamphlets, it was actually written as a model zoning ordinance. From nineteen eighty-nine, July five to June one of nineteen ninety, the township administered that this law. And then out of ninety-one, about eighty-nine of the local units gave it back. There was a de minimis list created that was a, a list of items that didn't constitute a use, that wouldn't require a permit. And it's evolved. It's in your package. It's, uh, for all your friends. Yeah. If you see that, for instance, three one is, uh, building stairs less than five foot wide. For all our friends on the lake, you go down their stairs. So I'm the author of that first one. Uh, the law was only running five years. In the fourth year, legislator, legislative said, appointed qualified team, see if we should keep this. I was on that committee. That's where that list began. And that's where that, um, there's a standard in there for the removal of a tree that jeopardizes human health and safety or structure can be removed. At that point, there's not a review. There's not an application made, but it's a very small list.
I can understand that. Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry for all the history, but so the timeframe and, and the stairwell is, we've all had friends on the beach or live on the beach. And those stairs five foot wide, that's on that same list, item number one, I believe it is. So few things determined by the department not to be a use, therefore not requiring a permit.
Right. Thank you. Sure. Questions?
Uh, Phil, I have a question. Uh, it's the second item on that list that, that I'd like to hear interpretation of removal of invasive species. Utilizing handheld tools does not require a permit. What is a handheld tool?
Uh, good question. I'll, I'll say the easy answer is non-mechanized.
Ah, it's not chainsaw.
You know, when they wrote the law, uh, Sand Dune Protection Management Act nineteen seventy-six, mining extraction two hundred and thousand acres by nineteen eighty-nine, it's, hey, development is having big impacts in the critical dune area as well. So when we went and developed the critical dune amendments in nineteen eighty-nine, the biggest thing is what are we going to allow people to do by hand? Versus, that's why I say mechanized, because the primary goal was don't destabilize the dune, don't do a use that creates erosion. The thought was mechanized equipment. Well, I have, believe it or not, for instance, uh, oh gosh, Oriental bittersweet, or someone want to take a small bobcat. Well, the critical dune law said a contour change done or caused to be done by an individual that significantly alters a critical dune area, you can't do, or you need a permit at least. So bobcats versus shovels. It was a safe bet, they felt at least, that will allow people to do things by hand. For instance, putting in fence posts by hand. If you wanted to take your three point on the back of your John Deere and use an auger, it's mechanized. There's a lot of gray area in there, um, dealing with a lot of different laws. It was written intended, for instance, Mika to administer it at the local level. And if you've had a chance to read through the statute, you'd say, wow, this would be a tough one to administer. And that's why I'm going to say eighty-seven out of ninety-one communities after the first year, including park township said, no, you guys administer this. So mechanized, potential for contour changes, loss of vegetative cover, increased surface water runoff, increased erosion, destabilize the feature.
All else requires a state permit.
Yes. If it's not on that list, it requires a permit.
Good.
The list is interesting, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it still has a mailbox or a, a, a pole for your basketball hoop or a setting your post, but, um, it was written as you read in there and you can tell, why did it say special exception and these other? It was written as a model zoning ordinance today. If you'd like to take over administration of part three fifty-three, you can take that document and send the department. When I started, it was D N R and then D Q. Now we're Eagle and say, we'd like to administer this law. I'd be glad to help Mika. You do it, but, uh,
Is it, is it still eighty-seven out of ninety-one that have pushed it back to the state?
You know, I think there's, uh, Port Chown Township, our neighbor, was one of the last ones to give it back. A lot of litigation there. Um, I think we might have two or three up north yet.
Okay.
Onakama or Benona gave it back. Um, I don't think Benzie has it. Lake, I'm not sure. I'd have to check. I can let you know.
It's, it's okay. I mean, it was a, I, I think it was a directional question as opposed to needing this absolute number. So thank you. I appreciate that. I can't, my point is I can't imagine too many communities deciding they want to take ownership of that.
Well, you know, that's a fair statement. It's, uh, being a lakeshore community, I'm sure you've had friends, maybe who have got into the process of permitting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some might have said it was very smooth. Others might've said it was a nightmare. Um, I could stand up here for hours as my friend here could say professor and pull me away. Um, it needs work. We're well-intended people out there. I have yet to meet anybody in thousands of site reviews that wanted to do something that was detrimental to their land. And those lands generally pass on to generational transition of stewardship. But there are communities who've said, we're going to take this on because our citizenry didn't feel they were getting a fair shake in it.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments? Was Mr. Johnson? No.
I have a question. Okay. But I was looking at this one section, um, probably need a little bit more detail. It says, provide for scheduled maintenance of the dedicated open space, including necessary pruning, mowing, replacement, uh, dead or diseased vegetation. So one owner, you know, has, they're kind of committed to that, to that piece. Now, when you have all these different owners, does that mean that, uh, once a year, somebody comes in and they, they look at that area and fallen trees or anything? How, how is it maintained and how is that cost distributed? Uh, like, oh, that tree is on your property. It's not on my property. So how do you, how do you manage the maintenance of this with all of these different owners?
It's probably that.
I'll let him speak to this. I hadn't been involved. I simply can comment as needed.
Thank you.
Just to maybe take a step back and provide some context. So right now, one person owns that space, right? So they're the ones that are on call for everything, like you mentioned. Is that like falls? They call Douglas and Sherry take care of it. The, the major intent behind this and why we're going to all these individuals is so that they can take care of this space that's behind their home. So those people will maintain the area at their own expense that's behind their home. So to the extent that it's within the boundary lines of their parcel that gets added to the lot that their home is on, they're responsible for it. So that there is no mechanism for cost sharing or fighting or anything like that. Everybody, it's, it's sectioned out in design so that everybody that has this area in their backyard is responsible for that slice directly.
And I understand that. And the concern that I have around that is, um, you may in your property say, yeah, I'm going to take care of that. I'm going to take that out. That, that's not a good thing to have. And then the person next to you may say, well, no, I'm not going to do anything with that maintenance. And so you're going to have, uh, a lot of different perspectives on what, what maintenance looks like. And there's not really a consistent approach on what it looks like. So how do you manage that?
Well, maybe I'll also say first that this area again, has a bunch of neighbors that are very interested in what one another are doing. There's a lot of eyeballs on each other out there. Uh, I'm sure if the township is aware, a lot of comments come along with that, sometimes directed at the township, sometimes directed at neighbors. We don't foresee that being a problem with this group of people because of the hyper-awareness. Again, because the, these are generational properties that have been passed down, that there is a value there that they're preserving that's beyond dollars and cents. Um, to the extent that it's a major issue or something like that, I think that's where Eagle, the department at the state level comes in and says, if you're going to do this and it's detrimental to those areas, we need to look at it. And frankly, they're not going to allow you to do something that harms that neighborhood. So I, I don't know. Sure.
Yeah, you all know who I am. So anyway, Douglas Dehan, um, I can answer that very, very clearly. Um, in the last two years since we've owned it, um, I've had, um, probably six neighbors ask if they could have, um, their trees fertilized spiked because they had an arborist out. We had one gentleman that a, and by the way, we wouldn't do that. Uh, we had another gentleman that called and said that a large big branch fell on his deck. Can he clean it off? Can he cut, cut that off his deck? We had another one that, um, during the storm, when half of this side of the lake went down, lost three hundred trees. There were some trees that went down over there. We, um, those that lost trees on what was going to be their property took care of it. So I would share with you that there's a higher likelihood of eighteen people taking care of what's in their backyard than Doug and Sherry Dehan taking care of three and a half acres. So I can just share with you, I think the responsibility has already been there. Um, people have taken, um, you know, as John said, a lot of these homes have been owned by three generations. People have only seen sixty, seventy years. They want to procure it. Um, but we've had more folks step up and say, can we do this to the property? Um, and I think I shared with you before, uh, there was one person that had, um, done something that, um, actually the Venandals didn't like. And so everyone's been kind of petrified up there. But, um, we truthfully have been working with the neighbors and allowing, um, people to do things. And, and I, as Phil said, um, it's in excellent shape. It's in excellent shape because you got eighteen people taking care of it. Not one. And I'm not a Venandal.
Thank you.
So my perspective from this question comes from, I was president of Marigold Homeowners Association. You have things written down. Everybody interprets it differently. And we manage chaos because everybody re- uh, thought about it differently. Uh, preserving trees was really a big thing. It was very, very problematic, uh, for Marigold Woods. Secondly, I live in a, in a condominium association where we have a lot of trees around us. And literally I have a neighbor now who is not doing the right thing with, uh, I've been there twenty-one years. They've been there five years. They don't really take care of it the way, if I were your neighbor, I'd take care of it the same way you do. And that's the way I take care of my property, but my neighbor doesn't do the same thing. Human nature is something that's written down. People will look at it differently. They'll interpret it differently and some will step up to it and some won't. So I guess my, just, just one more thing. The big question I have is how are you holding? You always hope people will do the right thing. I think there's an accountability issue here. And that's my biggest concern is how is that going to be addressed?
Why, why is this three acre singled out from the hundreds of acres of trees in Park Township? I mean, you just said you had a hard time with your neighbor. How are you handling it? How are you managing it? What accountability is there? I guess I'm looking at it saying, why is this three and a half acre on this hillside such an anomaly? Okay. I mean, we act like this is the only piece in Park Township that everyone's going to commit and be irresponsible. You had eight people show up last month that said how they wanted to purchase it, procure it, maintain it and generationally, generationally be stewards. So I don't know what else you can do. And people come up and they say, I'm responsible. When two physicians come up that own a home that live in California, that are here seven weeks, that pay sixty thousand dollars a year taxes and say, we'd like to own that piece to procure it and maintain it, I don't know how you can refute that. But I don't know why this is being singled out as some exception to Park Township. I mean, three acres out of hundreds of acres. And to be quite frank with you, um, I think people here have taken it responsibly. Uh, I just shared with you how many examples of people that want to procure it. They're, they're feeding it. They're taking care of the Russian olive. They're, they're, they're following all the rules. I mean, and so we just, my wife and I do not want to own three and a half acres of a critical dune, but we have eighteen people that want to partner up with us to do it. So I, I don't know why there has to be some bureaucratic overreach on this piece of property that's not on any other property in Park Township. I guess that's the question that has to be asked. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Cherry, one question and probably for you to answer. So it's been, um, divided up. On our maps, we see designated names for the people who will have the properties behind them right now. Um, it appears they're all accounted for, but it says it's perspective. What happens if somebody backs out? Are you going to have a patchwork of pieces of property you're going to be stuck with then that is behind somebody else's house?
This is structured so that it's a boundary line adjustment rather than a land division. Right. So because of the nature of a boundary line adjustment to make to add these lines. Somebody needs to add it to their existing parcel. So it's all marked as preliminary because we need to get approvals at the township level before we can accomplish that boundary line adjustment. And sell that section to the neighbor.
So it's not preliminary in that, hey, we're thinking about it. Come back to me. I'll let you know if I want to have that boundary line changed on my property.
That we have signed purchase agreements with each of those individuals.
Okay.
Indicating their agreement to purchase it. And the only condition really at this point is. Obtaining the township approval to to make it happen.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that question.
Great, thank you. Um, I, at this point, um, I would kind of like to get everybody's perspective on this. Um, I think we've had a lot of discussion. I think we understand the intent. Uh, I think we understand the desire of the. Of the property owners uh, to take this on and be good stewards of the property. But I I'd really like to get everybody's perspective on the on the planning commission and kind of understand who everybody is at this point. So Dennis, why don't we start with you?
Well, I think the property owners have taken. Um, serious ownership of the issue. And I think they've worked out a workable plan. I I also know it went into development in two thousand eleven. And all of the hurdles that had to be overcome. Uh, so I'm inclined to support. Uh, the recommendation.
Thank you. Stephanie.
I appreciate the follow-up. Um, I appreciate the three additional. Proposed conditions that have been brought forward um, following the conversation from our July meeting. Um, I think overall. I absolutely understand and hear that all of the um, current perspective um. Individuals are on board with this. I I do think there's something to Len's point um, that. It's going to come down to ultimately what is written in conditions and is enforceable um, because. People are people and you can commit and make decisions based on who's there now, but that doesn't necessarily hold true. Uh, indefinitely into the future. Um, that being said, I think, you know, overall, I would still be um, in favor of moving forward.
Thanks. Good points as well.
Yeah, I guess when I first got this information in our back a few months ago, I was I was kind of confused on the whole. Uh, purpose of it and stuff, but uh, having everybody come here and be properly representative. And explain it to us, it it made sense. Um, I also understand. The concern from the from the commission here about um. Development and tree removal and all the things we've been talking about tonight. And I think I'm quite satisfied with your approach. Quite satisfied with the uh. Demeter of the the potential property owners with the adjustment and how they'll manage themselves and think of us. Now, I think it's a good thing. Everybody in the neighborhood has seen and thinks it was a good idea to go forward, so nobody's not.
Thanks, Steve. Len.
I'll be consistent with what I said before. I support the intent of what you're wanting to do because I think it's it it makes a lot of sense. And I really, really like that part, and I support it. What I'm concerned about and what I would like to see is just like in a condominium association, you have a a president of an association. You have somebody that a neighbor can go to. If if somebody is not abiding by it, they're concerned. And it's the president's responsibility to go to that individual to say, you're not in compliance, you're not doing what we need you to do. I I'm just looking for a mechanism of accountability. And with that, I would support it. Without that, I wouldn't support it.
Okay. Thank you. Sure.
Um, like Mr. Copeland mentioned, when this was first brought before us. I too kind of scratched my head and didn't understand specifically what was being asked. In addition to that, we got a number of letters that were totally against it. Now, we haven't heard a peep from any of those people any further. And we've had more dialogue and conversations since then. Um. I understand your concern with regard to holding neighbors accountable. Um. But I got neighbors that surround me that are not accountable, and there's nothing anybody can do about it. People are people. Bottom line, I would support the proposal as it's been presented.
Thanks, Sharon. Dan.
When I um. Reviewed the uh, the proposal that you sent for this meeting that had the three items, the tree ordinance, the Michigan Forest Management Plan, practice, best practices, and Eagles regulations. I also went back and read the minutes from the July meeting. And we've been here once before. In that July meeting. And there were. Multiple comments about dissatisfaction with Eagle requirements. That's what led us to something different. Something. Termined overreach. Now we're back and say, we will enforce the Eagle regulations. We'll embrace them. Why weren't they embraceable back in July? With that. I think if you're committing as eighteen landowners to embrace Eagle regulations. And get plans that a dead tree cannot be cut down if it's not endangering anybody or your structure, you have to get a permit to do so. And you have to leave the root ball in the ground. If you embrace that, then I'm all. For. This going forward. When I get concerned is when something, a phrase you used, Doug, was. Trees came down in the May fifteenth storm and the property owners took care of it. What does that mean? Did they get a permit? To clean that up? Uh, I'm not saying they did or didn't, but.
It fell on your dad.
Well, you, okay.
So.
Yes.
Anything that's in the woods, stay.
Stay. Did not get, so it did not get cleaned up.
Correct.
Okay.
If it's the open safety of another tree or open safety of a person or a house.
Or a utility line.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so. Thank you for uh, broadening that comment. So I am a four, but I'm glad to hear that they are embracing the Eagle regulations.
It's in our, and and to be honest with you, it's all binding in our purchase agreement. We didn't know whether to submit that. But it's it states that what you sign this, you are agreeing to. These terms and conditions by the state of Michigan. We made that part of purchase agreement.
Okay.
So that's binding here with sale.
That's helpful to understand as well. Thank you. Um. Uh, I'm also for this. Um, I think uh, I think there's been a. Clear demonstration of the intent and the desire of uh. Of both the applicant and also the landowners, individual owners, uh, that their biggest interest is taking care of this uh, this critical space. Um, I I do think one of the things that I think maybe got us. I'll say a bit in the weeds at the beginning was the term reforestation plan. Um, that I think as we've kind of worked through that takes on a lot more. Seems a lot bigger uh, and probably is a lot bigger and probably meant for a much larger um. Scenario and property. I think what we're really talking about is, and and we've used the term, I think, maintenance, um, a maintenance plan. What is that going to be? Um. It doesn't need to be a big document, but I think um, probably one page. And and coming from your experience, how have you handled these situations when they've come up? Yeah.
To defend that.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Could you help them approach the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. Yes, please do.
I think to the extent that. First off, I I think. At this step. Just logistically, right? It's a recommendation to the township board.
Correct.
I think the township board is technically the one that has the authority to legislate to require that as a. Piece of restriction or or it's essentially a private restriction that functions as legislation, is the way to say it. So. What typically happens is is. At that township board. Level, we talk about what those conditions are.
Mm hmm.
And it's been my experience that the township board will say, yes, this request is approved on the condition that you provide a written. Recordable document listing these conditions. And one of those conditions could be that essentially the the folks have to take care of it. And they've got to take care of it in accordance with. Our township tree ordinance, the Michigan forestry guidelines, and in accordance with all Eagle. Regulations. That's typically how that gets documented.
Okay.
And then that does get recorded and it's entitled um, and and runs perpetuity for all of these. Owners. So I don't know if that answers the question, but it is. It can be a very straightforward, simple document that says, by granting this approval, these are the things that people are bound to.
That's my thought. Mika, do you have, is, are you aligned with? With that approach then?
I am. And I want to make sure you're comfortable with it. So here typically, the planning commission will look at those conditions and approve them and then put that on, send that on to the township board. And they can make changes there because that's that's right, that they're the final approvers of this. Um, if there are, if there are things that you would like to see in that. Approval or in those conditions, then can include that in your recommendation. You can leave it at their discretion. Um, that's correct, that that can happen at the board level.
Okay, is it? Is it advisable to include that? That, if you will, one-page bulleted document showing the things that they will do to maintain this property?
I think it would be helpful, yeah. And I think it could be helpful for, if you had some things in mind for you to. Give that direction as well to the applicant. Um, I know that if legal counsel were here, that he had some comments on that as well, and that he'd probably want to see that at the board level. Um, any information that you can give the applicant at this stage makes it easier for them when they get to the next stage, so that it can hopefully be a one and done at that point.
Yeah, I I think maybe. I don't know exactly how Park Township does it, but in the planning commission resolution to recommend approval or recommend denial. You just can sort of ward that so that you're recommending approval on the condition that we do X, Y, and Z.
Right.
And so you're recommending to the board that they approve this. Subject to these conditions. And one of those conditions can be that we put something like this in place.
Okay.
I I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn because Dan's not here, but that's. Yeah, that's typically how that gets documented in the minutes and everything else, so that we can then. Prepare those conditions to talk about them more fully at the township board.
Yeah, that sounds good. I I, yeah, I think uh, my perspective, and we did have a conversation with Dan today, and he talked a little bit about um. The open space piece and the fact that it would be. Even though the individual owners uh, would be purchasing a piece of that and managing it. It's still owned and and I'm I'm not an attorney or a uh, real estate agent, but I think it's both individually and also in total is the way that that would be looked at.
Yeah, so I I think probably what he was talking about has to do with sort of a legal term of art, joint and several liability.
Joint and several.
That vibes, essentially that agreement is binding on. All parties to that. So e- each of the eighteen owners is jointly and separately liable. So if something happens. Somebody needs to enforce it, they can come after everybody.
Right.
That's sort of that mechanism. Um, and that's one of those things that's usually boilerplate language that gets baked into that document.
Right. And it would be, it would be entered in the documents from the, yes.
Correct. And again, my experience here is probably that. You know, if this is a recommendation with conditions, that we then work with township. Council to kind of try to document that to the fullest extent possible so that the township board can put eyes on it before they make a decision.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. So I think what I would, I guess what I would suggest is that if we are in favor of this, that we do it uh, on the condition that uh, that we would have a. Essentially that a very. Short um. But specific maintenance plan. That folks would agree to. I think it's very much what you've been doing to take care of the property. I would hope it would be fairly easy to put together. Um. And that would be entered in as as an element of the approval. Or the recommendation to the board of approval. I'll just look for heads nodding to see if folks are comfortable with that.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not seeing your head nod.
I think it's necessary.
Okay.
I mean, we're talking about, I mean, each 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 individual property owner is getting a small chunk. It's in addition to property that there you have. I mean, it's pretty clear that if a tree falls on a deck, power line. Prevents a, you know, presence of hazard or something like that, it's got, they can take care of it.
Of course.
If it falls in the woods without permit, you're not going to touch it. So I don't, I don't think the scale of the maintenance is. If anybody that has it fall into their deck or their power line to their house, they're going to take care of it. So I don't think we need to add another layer of accountability.
And that's the other, the other option would be to to approve it. And then leave that piece, I think, is uh. Our attorney has, the attorney has suggested up to the board to be able to to address. I don't know if you've seen it. This is, this is pretty unique, I think. And and I guess the commentary is. When we see any type of a recommendation for open space and any type of a development, it's typically not owned. Individually. And I think that's why we've wrestled with this a little bit more than we typically. Apologies for the delay for those that are, uh, it's impacted their. Their scenarios, but what are, what are your thoughts, Mika, on that?
My, I guess my, my thought would be that that was something that council had recommended to us. It is part of the PUD. Ordinance and, you know, he had said you do have to follow your ordinance. So it might be something that's minable, but I suspect that if we say. Eh, we just don't need it at all. Once it gets to the township board, they'll have some concerns about that. I can't say that for sure. That's just my inclination. So it seems like even if we're just a minimal. Type of maintenance agreement, that that would be something that they would want to see. Um. And then the only other thing that I would say is that there, you know, the documents that were provided to you. You know, I kind of outlined in my memo that there are some concepts you can pull from that, but concepts aren't enforceable. It has to be pretty specific in order to enforce it. Um, otherwise, one of those, um, one of those lawyers in the neighborhood will also be calling the township and it'll cause some other kind of issue. So we just want to have clarity for that. So if there are specific things that you do want to see, um, I, it would be helpful to call those out specifically. And you don't have to. But if you do want to see them, it it just needs to be specific enough to be enforceable.
Oh, question for John. Um. You you referenced that in the property transfer, there's going to be. The tree ordinance, the the language of what.
In the purchase.
The regulations will be in the purchase agreement or in the deed or whatever.
So when we. Initially went about. Thinking about this, knowing that it's a critical dune area and everything else, we wanted to alert buyers. Or the neighbors of this, essentially this responsibility at the very beginning. So we put a provision in that purchase agreement. That essentially says, you buyer acknowledged that this is in a critical dune area. That you are, that this is subject to all the regulations of a critical dune, that it's subject to the Eagle requirements. They've signed an agreement saying that they're going to buy that property with that knowledge in hand. They know that they are. Required by law. As it exists now, and and that's not going to change because the ownership of the property changes. That that restriction exists, whether we put it in a deed restriction or not. And I think. Or what we propose doing is, you know, we're not going to put it, we are not proposing it putting in everybody's deed. Saying that they need to comply with state law because it's sort of a given. We don't want to create a bunch of confusion by doing that. But what we're proposing doing is is saying. Globally, for the entire three and a half acre section. We'll impose these three conditions. And one of those conditions is that it's got to be. You know, everything's got to be managed like we've outlined and.
The reason I'm asking the question is if you've got this language already created, can't we just adopt it?
That's where.
As part of a.
I I mean, it's not.
Probably not as specific.
If you're looking for specific maintenance details about how often somebody is going to go out there and. Clear some debris or things like that. No, that's not addressing the purchase agreement.
I'm I'm looking in in what commitments the eighteen. Shareholders are making.
They've committed to buying the land subject to the responsibility that they maintain it with in Eagle standards.
Yes.
And frankly. If we put together a separate. Maintenance agreement document. That's going to be in the first draft of whatever I propose. It says that. You know, the people subject to this agreement are going to maintain it in accordance with Eagle standards.
It just seems to me like the language already exists and we just need to cut and paste, isn't it?
To some extent, yes. It's just a matter of framing it. And and I think we're offering to do that for the township, the township board, so that they can. Make a decision if it's. Enough.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Did you have specifics in mind when you mentioned a one-page or bulleted item? Or is it the same along the lines as what is being presented? Or did our attorney, Mr. Martin, have any specifics that we should include?
I think. I did not have specifics. I think what um, was mentioned earlier had to do with the uh, understanding that if uh. That if, and again, we don't want people, you know, walking through and traipsing through all this, but if they were, if they were on a particular individual's portion of this. It was still the responsibility of everybody. Because of that. And that's the the. And that's the the open space, uh, you both the ser- uh individual and also in several.
Yeah, and and I think that that recorded document can achieve that without creating what might be suggested as like a standalone association. I think that that's. Something that we're not comfortable with because that adds a whole layer of, I think, like we mentioned back in July, that these. Parcels, this is really a sliver between two associations. Everybody's already got all that. We don't want to add another layer. Um. But I I do think that that can be included in that standalone document that says that everybody is essentially responsible for each other's.
Do you understand?
Community responsibility.
Maybe that needs to be spoken to.
Yeah, it it. I struggle sometimes because when attorneys draft. Things, they draft it with an attorney or a judge in mind and they use those specific terms of art because it's unfortunately, it's a bit of a language thing.
Yeah.
And you have to kind of signal to whoever's reviewing it to try to enforce it that this is what we meant. And. Longest way of saying, yes, I would draft it in a way that Dan. Would understand what he explained to you.
Okay, that would be great.
And um, I think it's recommended because I don't think you want any more holdups. I don't want you get to get to the board level and then not understand everything that's happened to that point and want to be reeducated. And push you back more months. I don't think you're looking for that.
No, I I do expect there will be some reeducation because they're gonna, the first question is gonna be like, why, why are you here? Why is this here? Um. So there will be some explanation of that, but I think that, you know, if this is recommended with that condition, we can. Briefly talk that through. And again, my goal would be that they have something in writing that they can look at when they're.
So I just advise to be prepared and if you're going to talk to Mr. Martin, maybe he's the one that directs you to come prepare with a one page bulletin.
Absolutely, that would be my plan.
Okay. With that. I think in general we're supportive. Uh, do I have a motion to put this to the vote?
What do we word?
How would we word it?
I think what? I I would move that we put this to a vote uh with the understanding that we had that a document uh of a maintenance document with simple bullets. Doesn't need to be very complicated, but a very simple, easy to understand uh maintenance. I would propose that they do that and and with that I would approve it.
Okay. Mika, do you have a thought on?
No, only to re- only to reiterate that if there are specific things that you want included in that to include whatever those specifics are. But you don't have to.
I want the Park Township tree ordinance, the Michigan Forest Management Best Practices and the Eagle Regulations in that.
Those are, when I reviewed those as the one who enforces things, they weren't specific enough for me to be able to enforce. So there were concepts in there that were good. So the forestry document, for example, had a lot of great education and interesting items in it. But there was nothing I could point at and say, you know, this is something that you can't do or that you can't do. So um. And it was similar like the tree preservation ordinance because it's written for a different audience. Jonathan referred to some of this. You've got this legal language. It's very specific in what we're able to enforce. So if it says, you know, a developer can't X, Y, and Z, it makes it pretty tricky for me to come in and say a land, an individual landover. Can't X, Y, and Z, and Z.
So but so Eagle Regulations are the only one of those three that are enforceable?
Correct, yes, yes.
Well, that makes it sort of simple.
Do you want to make?
We we have a motion on the table.
Oh.
We want to modify that or?
Maybe amend it.
Amend that. We haven't voted yet, so.
So we should um. I'll move that we amend the the motion on the table. To specify that the maintenance agreement. Is. Are the Eagle Regulations for Critical Dunes Management.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I would amend your motion to say, yes, we'll adopt the Eagle. So we would approve it uh with the uh with the Eagle document as a maintenance plan. With additional detail that we feel that the Eagle document is not covering. And I believe. That this group of people know what that is. I would have to go through and read that whole Eagle document again. I don't think it's going to have a level of detail. I mean, I went through and looked at that, but I don't think it's going to have the detail that that I would be looking for. Because I think it's more conceptual than it is specific and anything that's conceptual is open to interpretation. So to Mika's point, I, there may be some things that we want to make sure that are in there. I would have to look at that again for me to come up with that list of things that that I think need to go in there. My recollection is it's very conceptual and I don't think it's as specific as I would like to see. The more specific you can be, then there's less interpretation that people have to have, and I think it would just be managed much, much more effectively. I think it just needs a little bit more detail than the Eagle document.
I don't know what that detail would be.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and read it. With that intent.
So Len, are you thinking of the the forest management plan or are you thinking of the legislation? When you're referring to the Eagle document? Because I I feel the legis. Or are you referring to the um, the other Eagle document is the um. The zero zero eight, the um section that's on parts not constituting a use.
Okay.
And so that's that's a little bit different.
I think it's the other one. If it's not the the Michigan document. We still have to go through.
And I wonder if maybe if there are some things that you're thinking specifically that you would want to make sure without looking at just kind of out of your head, like I want to make sure that, you know, that whatever X, Y, or Z.
Mm hmm.
Would be.
To be honest, I would actually have to go through. I can't do it here. I'd actually need an hour or two to go through and really look at that document to see if I feel like it is, it has that level of detail.
Could I ask a question quickly on this?
Um, yeah.
Is, would it be acceptable for us to approve this with the with the understanding that a. Maintenance Agreement, we'll call it, document will be provided. That can be evaluated by staff as opposed to. Uh, reviewed again by the planning commission.
Yeah, it and on the like on the way to the township board, yeah.
Yes, because I think, I think if we say that that needs to be provided within thirty days and they can provide that within a shorter period of time, uh, when is the next board meeting?
Uh, three weeks, yeah. So we would probably need it within about, within about a week in order for staff and legal counsel. And I would, I would ask that council be included in that review. Obviously, I think it will be, but um.
I'm just trying to help us get, because I don't think any of us have exactly the points that we want to have in here, but we also feel like this is a good thing and we want to approve.
Mm hmm. Yeah, I, yeah, and I agree. I think that you guys have talked about it enough that there's a general idea of what it is that that you want to see. So, you know, if you're ready to just pass it on to the board, you can do that. Just want to make sure if there's any. Any content that you want that you're passing that on as well.
I'd be very happy if I can just pass along my comments to you, staff. If there, so give me the opportunity to read through if there's something specifically I'm looking at. I would be happy to pass that along to you. But I. Timing wise, I don't know when you need to have that.
Yeah, and that probably needs to be done in open session if it's something that's going to be uh included as as part of the, like a condition of approval.
What if the applicant provides that to you?
What's that? The?
The maintenance plan.
Yes, yes, I would like them to draw it up and not that to be staff time. That's something that they should draw. And I think that there is boiler pa- plate as Jonathan had indicated. There's boilerplate around that. As well.
And Eagle restrictions, there is detail. I I I'm going to take note of this. There's a vegetation assurance plan. So if you're going.
Mister Chair, I'm sorry, could you have him approach the microphone if you would like to?
Corey, please.
So I, what I'm saying is you aren't going to find any more detail in the Eagle Plan. We got the state of Michigan that has a thirteen page document on how to take care of a critical dune. They have an assurance of vegetation plan. So if you take down a tree, they tell you which one of a hundred and eleven plants that you can put in and how you do it. So I I don't know how we're going to come up with another. More detail to Eagles Plan. I mean, we have the gentleman here that wrote it. So I think if you have a vegetation assurance plan, it's already adopted by the Ottawa County Conservation District and Eagle. There there's, again, there's all these layers in here to protect it. So I don't know why we have to find three more things to make it more difficult.
And and what I'm looking for, maybe I'll, I'll try to be a little clearer. If, okay, so if one of the property owners has that. Has something that that needs to be addressed by Eagle. Will they contact them individually or will the, be somebody within? The the broad, the eighteen owners. That will be the point person for that property. It would be the individual property owner, correct? Okay.
It just like anyone along Lake Michigan, anyone on Lake McIntosh, everyone's under the same thing. It's not like these eighteen people. Are different people than anyone on Lake Mac or Lake Michigan. I mean, it's all governed by Eagle. Our shorelines, our water lightways, I mean, same rules for everyone. I, we're almost pointing out like these eighteen are irresponsible, but everyone on Lake Mac is not. I I think we have to look at this and say there's enough there already, truthfully. Yeah.
I agree. Yeah, we do. I'm supporting this. All right.
We need to follow ordinance.
We need to follow.
The follow our ordinance. So that's where that maintenance agreement comes from. So you are able to pass it without that. But again, I suspect that when it comes to the board, that that would be, that that was something that would come up there. So. That's my only caution, and that's the advice of legal counsel. Because I'd like to see this go forward and kind of be off.
I agree.
Off the deck as well.
I agree.
Mister Chair, if I may, I think from our July conversation and and I don't know if we can just wrap it into the maintenance plan, um. There's a general consensus from what I'm hearing that we're in alignment with Eagle. As it exists today. Um, I, the concern was if it were to be dissolved or. No longer um in effect at some point in the future. Um, so I think if if we have that maintenance plan and it at least references. Um, what's in existence today as we acknowledge that. That's enough. Then that would take. The concern that I had from our July meeting, right, is at least adhering to the standards as they exist today, should. They cease to exist. As they are at some point in the future. We're all agreeing that at least where we're at today to these standards would be acceptable going forward. That that's what I was looking for in in July and if we can include that as our our. Bullet point in the maintenance plan um. To satisfy the needs for um, you know, keeping this moving forward, but ultimately keeping within the spirit of what we're attempting to achieve. Um, I I guess that's, that's what I would.
Right.
Like to amend or recommend um with our. Is it still open our proposal on the table?
I think the concern is that that did happen unlikely as it is it likely is that um. We would have something that's enforceable within the tension if if need ever to, if need ever was. So. I think that sounds like a great recommendation. Would you put that into a, into a motion?
Do we have a motion?
I think we have a motion on the floor. So I think maybe um there should be maybe some motions rescinded or amended. Maybe just rescind and start over so that we're clear on what we're doing.
I rescind my motion.
Okay.
If I made one, I rescind it.
Me involved in that. Okay. You've been rescinded, Stephanie.
Okay, you want me, you want me to try and make it, make a a motion um that we recommend approval to the board um. With the condition that a maintenance, maintenance plan um is included uh that specifically indicates that we're. Um, following the Eagle guidelines and just ensuring that um these are the minimum guidelines going forward that would be adhered to for the maintenance and management of this property should. That entity uh cease to exist in the future.
Support.
Very welcome.
Very welcome. All right, so we have, we have a motion and we have support. Uh, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Any opposed? I think it's passed. It's, it's a proof to uh go to the board. Thank you for your patience. I know it wasn't easy. We appreciate your. Thank you very much. Your participation. Thank you.
I know, cool.
All right. So we now have a uh. Public hearing. Do we, you want to open the public hearing before we set this up or?
Why don't I give just a brief introduction of of the proposal?
That would be great. Thank you.
And is someone from the applicant here? If you are, okay. Oh, there you are. I didn't see, didn't see you. Okay, so this is a site condominium request. It's a straight site condominium. Um, and a site condominium is kind of a misleading term because it's relatively new. Uh, not super new, but new enough that not everyone understands what a site condominium is. And so it's this, these aren't attached structures. They look like a standard single family home. I think the last site condos that we saw were the Blue Haven Development. So um, that's, you you're not able to distinguish it from a single family home. Uh, it's a fairly straightforward development. Um. Municipal water and sewer are available in that area. It's been reviewed by engineering. Um. So it's, it's pretty straightforward with one exception, which is tree preservation, which is really difficult on this parcel. Um, there's a lot of great wooded area on this parcel and but it's not, it's not. Large uh in the sense of where exactly you're going to put and preserve those trees. And the one thing that we keep running into, and this is. Um, this is both as we consider the the tree preservation ordinance and how to make it work. Um, and in evaluating this application specifically, uh, the tree preservation ordinance is something that's really important in this township, obviously, as you know. Uh, but and it also is kind of in conflict with some of the drainage requirements from Ottawa County Water Resources and elsewhere. So you have two goods that are competing uh on each of these parcels as they're being developed. Um, the water resources is trying to keep all stormwater on site in order to reduce flooding. Reduce the need for further stormwater infrastructure and that sort of thing. So that's why you see more uh drainage retention areas than you used to see in the past. You also as part of that need a way to get the stormwater to whatever the detention facility is. When you layer that on top of our tree preservation ordinance, what we're finding. Uh, when we actually get on the ground and see these things being built is that some of these stormwater swales. Are in about the same area. We would like to see some of these tree line buffers. And so we've talked to the developer about this as well. I don't have a great solution right off the bat. This is just something that we're going to have to be working through to figure out. How do we keep this value of the tree preservation, acknowledging that you have the competing good of of this drainage? And then look at the reality that if you're building something, you're building something and you've got a road that's going to have to go in and you've got some houses as well. So. That I think is is the primary tension that you see on this parcel and in this and in this application. And that's the one. Item that's outstanding. Everything about it is fairly straightforward. Other than that, tree preservation component, especially as it meets with the the drainage. So um, I don't know if you wanted the applicant to speak next before the public hearing or have the public hearing next, but. That's my piece.
There's, there's not a standard approach for doing that, huh?
There probably is, but.
I would, yeah, I I would uh, I would prefer to do the public hearing first. Uh, so with that, uh, I need a motion to open the public hearing for Trillian Grove.
Listen to open the public hearing.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Right. It's open. If uh for any of you on the left side, uh, first row that would like to speak and raise your to Trillian Grove. Okay. If you would, go ahead. Uh, try to stick with the three minutes, uh, fill in your name, make sure we know who you are.
Good.
And fire away.
All right. My name is Ross Coney. I look at, I live on Bentwood Court. This property butts uh the backside of my property. Um, when I first heard of the development, I was uh certainly concerned. I've lived there for about fifteen years now. Uh, love the area uh for the the beauty it provides, the nature that's there and all the wildlife. Um, I knew there was a tree preservation ordinance that was uh implemented about five, six years ago. And started to look through that, find out a little bit more about the details and all the requirements. And in so doing, I started to look through um. Some of the other developments that have been going on around the township. As well as documents like the master plan, um, seeing the mission statement for the township. And then sitting here and overhearing the uh discussion that you had about uh the dunes and so forth. I think we all agree that there is a lot of interest in preserving. The natural spaces that we have in the township. And I know there was a development on the south side of town uh that Boscraft put in and. Um, when I look at satellite images of before and after. I was shocked at how much clear cutting had taken place. I know you have another development. I believe it's called Shorewood. Up on Butternut and Hundred Forty Fourth. And I know you've had some discussions on that and it appears that there is a lot of concern related to tree removal. So. If we continue to develop these areas that are heavily wooded. If we continue to develop these areas that are heavily wooded and we clear cut. What does that say about our interest in preserving the nature and the beauty of this township and keeping it rural? And, um, a desirable place to live. And I know it's gets borders on that, not in my backyard, but it is my backyard. And I have a lot of concern of what could happen to that property if it's, shall I say, overdeveloped. So.
Thank you.
Do I need to write my name here and?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you would, please. Makes it easier when we're pulling the notes together for the meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks. Staying with the left side. Any other folks on the left side that would like to speak? I'm sorry, our left, your right. Okay. Let's move over to our right, your left. First row, anybody who'd like to speak? Come on, we won't bite.
Hey, we're going to the second row, that's all I can tell you.
Second row is fine, sure. We'll do two at a time.
My name is Brian Waterway. My family has, uh, lived next to this Wintersome property for close to a hundred years. I have family members that have planted a lot of those trees. Um, there are. I believe two main oak trees on a knoll in that property. There's a couple of black cherry trees. On the southern edge, the majority of the trees there are white pine and very old white pine. Um, I have a couple of concerns. I, I personally, I'm not against the development. I think the density could be cut down. Um, I'm concerned about density number one. Number two, there are. The main drain from Silver Ridge and Waterway Pines, um, runs directly underneath that property. And when I see where their retention pond is planned to go, I'm really concerned that, um. Cautions have to be taken to avoid damaging that drain. Uh, Scott is here. His dad was one of the ones that originally did Silver Ridge. He did in conjunction with our project that Waterway Pines. Um, so I, I know they have access to exactly where that drain runs. Um, all the way from Silver Ridge to Waterway Pines down to Pine Creek. So. I guess my concerns would be, number one, let's make sure there's nothing that happens to that drain. I think it's a twenty-four inch pipe that runs underground there. Um, with white pines that are on the property. Um, that's a mature stand that's been there. I used to play there as a kid seventy, eighty years ago. So I'm probably as familiar with that property as anybody in this room. And I would be concerned that the tree ordinance to some extent is followed. Um, there are a lot of junk trees. Uh, our border from Waterway Pines is also white pine. Um, and it butts out directly to this property. Um, I would be concerned, um, that those aren't damaged in any way. Um, if you go fifty feet off our property line into the Wintersome property, there used to be a lot of black spruce, Black Hill Spruce. They have been diseased. I would say ninety percent of them have fallen down and that area is a jungle. Um, there are probably half a dozen medium sized cherry trees in there that, in my opinion, are junk trees. I wouldn't care if, if they came out, the white pines, if Scott's got a way to preserve some of that. Um, my opinion would be, it'd be worthwhile to do so. I'm not familiar enough with that ordinance. Um. To address what density of trees have to stay or what your master plan calls for. So that's my two sons worth.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate the history as well. That's always something.
My grandpa actually shot a bear on that property about ninety years ago.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm also with, uh, resident of Waterway Pines, Jerry Stoneburner, about twenty-two years now. I guess my only concern is I've reviewed some of the documents and it's not clear what kind of condominiums they're going to put in there. It says individual units. I, I assume that's a resident unit. Um, because you can have a building and have multiple units in it too. Uh, I suppose we're going to hear more about that. And what is their target market? There was nothing that I saw in there for families to playgrounds or anything else. And being a neighborhood of theirs in Waterway Pines, that's not, if, uh, you know, we're, we're good neighbors, but we don't have anything in there for children either. So, um, we just want to make sure what it's going to be and how it's going to be in tech, uh, growth. Okay. I can run my name too, if you want.
Thank you. I'll, uh, normally this isn't a Q and A, but I'll comment on the, uh, since you asked about the condos. It's actually the, the development is called a site condominium. And what that is, is it's single family homes on private Lea owned lots. Uh, it's not the same as a condominium project that you would think of. Uh, it's just the terminology that kind of defines the way that's set up legally. So it's a little different from a subdivision, uh, but it's, it's essentially structured, uh, as all individual, single family.
Two story, one story? How many square feet in each one?
I think the developer will probably give us a little bit more, more perspective on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, any other folks on our right, your left that would like to speak? Next row or same row? Okay. Doesn't appear so, and if not, uh, I'll take a motion to, uh, close the public hearing. So.
Support.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? All right. Uh, public hearings closed. If the applicant would like to speak, we'd be happy to hear what you got planned.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Mike Boscraft, Boscraft Homes. Uh, we are the, uh, actual owners of the property now. We have closed on it. Uh, so we are the, uh, developer. We will be the builder as well. So we're intimately familiar with the project now. Um. I had with me, uh, Eric DeYoung from Naderbel, who, uh, is our engineer, who can address, you know, some of the more technical, uh, issues. Uh, given the, uh, you know, public hearing, uh, there's a couple of things, uh, I can maybe add to it. Uh, it sounds like the big issue is going to be tree preservation, so I think I'm going to defer that for a few seconds here and get past the rest of it. Um. I think you did a good job of explaining condos versus homes. Um. I'm going to go one step further. Uh, so the state of Michigan has two ways to record property in the state of Michigan. Either through the subdivision control act or the condominium act. Uh, condominium act, you can have condominiums, you know, like, uh, the Waterway Pines, you can have bolt slips, you can have storage units. And you can have homesites. It's the same condominium act. It changes with the bylaws and master deed that you, uh, record as part of this naturally. And so all of our homeowners will own all four corners of their home site. Uh, they have, you know, full use of that land. Subject to part township restrictions and subject to our master deed and bylaws. So if we say they can have swing sets and our township says they can have swing sets, they can have swing sets. Um, but they are not, uh, traditional condominiums where we'd have the same design, you know, characters through the whole thing. Um, clarifying with Brian, it's Mike, not Scott. Scott's the, uh, Scott's my, uh, brother. We try to.
I'm just kidding.
Uh, and then just a little bit of historical context. So yes, uh, you know, probably twenty, twenty-five years ago, uh, along with Genon DeCock, we did bring a, uh, storm sewer line through this property, uh, to Waterway. You know, there's a storm network through Waterway, uh, condominiums, and then it goes through Silver Ridge, which we did Silver Ridge. And then it eventually goes to Wild or, uh, whatever the next one is that we did. And so ultimately it's all interconnected. And I think from a, uh, uh, historical context, uh, the property is zoned correctly. And I think, given that it has water and sewer, it's zoned correctly and it has the storm water, you know, configured for it. I think, uh, you know, historically, I think it's, it's been put in play for a long time, just waiting for the homeowner, landowner, uh, to sell. Give it to you for a minute and then.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, my name is Eric DeYoung. I'm with Naderbel. Um, and I think the item of the, uh, condominium configuration has kind of been, um, asked and answered. Um, thanks to Mika for her work and her thorough report. So I don't feel like we need to go through everything. A lot of it is, is in her report, but I'll try to hit on a few topics, uh, of interest. Um, this is a, we are presenting essentially a buy right plan. This is zoned R three. So the homesites that are proposed meet all the site regulating standards that are articulated in that portion of the ordinance as far as minimum size, as far as, um, minimum widths and so forth. We're presenting, uh, all lots that fit that. That's why we're not here for a P U D. This is a, a buy right, uh, type of plan. Um, we are proposing public road, uh, Bentwood and Twin Oaks, uh, of course are public. And, uh, uh, we are proposing to connect those in a way, uh, that features public roads as well. We've received approval by the Ottawa County, uh, Road Commission Board for the location of this entrance. Um, in this location, uh, because of, uh, of the distance here, they have evaluated that and affirmed that as an appropriate place for an entrance there for a public road. Uh, the road will, uh, conform to, uh, the road commission standards, widths, uh, specifications, all that. And then in the end, they would, uh, adopt that road. We are proposing a drain dry stormwater management basin on the west side of the property. Um, we will need some pipes and easements to help convey that water to that basin. And that basin will need to satisfy all the requirements of the township engineer, the Elgro standards, which are again, there's more stringent standards that were adopted about three years ago. We'll furnish the calculations and it'll ensure that the drainage for the area is appropriate. Um, all those calculations would be, uh, reviewed by the township engineer, Prime Newhoff. Um, and there is adequate storage volume for any of the storm water that would be collected and from the impervious on, uh, surfaces on the site. Um, it was mentioned backyard drains. Yes, we need to grab some of that water from the backyard to convey that to those, to those areas. The, uh, utility connections proposed are pretty straightforward. There is existing sanitary sewer that runs along this northern easement here and proceeds out, uh, this way to the east. Um, the water would be looped to Twin Oaks, which is, uh, the, the preferred, uh, method of providing municipal water. They like to see these kind of loops to enhance pressure and ensure, uh, consistency in the water systems there. So we would loop this water in this fashion to, to Bentwood, not to Twin Oaks. Um, with our, uh, submittal, we have included a landscape plan. That's the L one hundred sheet. Um, and that's mimicked on the illustrative plan on the front sheet. So you see it, um, if I may. The illustration kind of mimics the landscape plan, which gives the details. Um, there would be areas around the perimeter where the trees are, um, essentially untouched. Um, we understand for the reforestation plan for, uh, that we need to bring back some trees that we're going to need to take out. Um, the landscape plan shows street trees proposed with appropriate spacing as the, when we bring in some driveways here, but they, um, the landscape calculations illustrate how we are conforming to the landscape section of the ordinance. Now, we do need to accommodate, uh, obviously the road coming in and some of the grade changes that are proposed. So we do need to remove some trees. Um. We have furnished a tree canopy calculation. Um, this is the same calculation and, and the proposed planting levels that were reviewed for your Stablewood project, which was, uh, I believe last month. So we need to remove about, uh, about eight acres of trees, uh, for the, uh, reti- detention basin and for the homesites. Um, so that if you consider, uh, one mature tree, weights to about sixteen hundred square foot of canopy. Um, that means, uh, you know, the calculation here, we'd be removing about two hundred and twenty-seven trees. Your ordinance says you need to, uh, bring back, uh, uh, one for every four that you've taken out. And we are proposing fifty-seven trees in the front yards, uh, and along the street here. So, um. Articulating, um, how we are conforming to the, the ordinance in that way and much the same calculation that you saw a couple of weeks ago. But in summary, um, it is a buy right plan. Uh, the utilities, the, um, the context here makes sense. We are some, essentially mimicking, um, the same density, so site regulating standards that's featured, uh, on the, on the project to the south. So, uh, again, happy to answer any questions that you might have, me and Mike are here. So, um, happy to do that. Thank you. Thanks.
Well, I'll certainly start. Um, I, I think the first thing that was brought up was, uh, how to square the, uh, the tree ordinance with, uh, the drainage requirements. Uh, what we're looking at on the, on the plan, uh, on this plan, the top plan, shows, uh, existing trees. Uh, we know in some cases there's going to be drainage and typically trees don't do well in drainage swales, I don't think. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know that there's an answer to this, but have you had any, any thoughts around how some of this might be managed?
We probably, uh, Mika and I had a conversation, uh, struggling through this and it really just isn't struggling. And so maybe giving a little bit more context to the site.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the first thing that we have to do is account, so taking my, Bentwood here is almost the exact same size of property. And if you notice, there's no mature trees, you know, anywhere in through here. So when they went in, they basically cleared out the site. Uh, the trees that you see in the front yards, obviously were all planted.
Mm-hmm.
There are a scattering of trees that are maintained. What's happened since Bentwood is county regulations, grain regulations have changed. So now all of a sudden, the first thing we have to do is account for all of our surface water, storm drains, whatever. And that becomes this. That location, you know, so this is dictated by basically an engineer, calculations, following the guideline. Uh, with engineers with a box, so it's like they've got, they, you, they, they got to follow. And it typically has to be on the lowest portion of the property. You know, this is where it pretty well subs. So this is why it's in this location. There is a strip coming down through here, which, you know, twenty-something years ago, when we put that in, the store, or I'm sorry, the sanitary through here, we cut out a strip of trees here and, uh, put the storm in. Storm's already there. We have to, you know, get to it in a few locations, but it's not significant. Uh, you know, we can preserve what trees are around there. Uh, you know, we can preserve what trees are around there up until the point. Uh, Ken Bosman or, you know, the drain, drain commissioner comes in and says, okay, now we want you to pick up, you know, water here, here, here. Which is a new, relatively new regulation again is. Uh, out of county state of Michigan, everybody wants to hurry up and put as much water down tight as possible. And raise somewhere else, which, you know, I, I'm not sure I'm agreement with, but it is a regulation. So. Uh, I can try to preserve as many trees as possible up until the point government tells me to take them up. Um, and that's probably, you know, the biggest issue. Uh, a little more context is the road is lifted up here, you know, it's, so uh, we're going to be required to bring the site up to match the road. Which and then your uh, your uh bike path ordinance. Has requiring about how far off the road that actually be. So suddenly, that takes out some of the trees. And then lifting the road by ordinance or by design. Takes out probably the rest of the trees in front here, which means we have to reclaim. In a work, uh, in a better location. Now, the walk, you know, everything has to get back to here and the road, you know, sewage flows down. So whether we do uh old basements, daylight basements, walkout basements. Uh, the road has to be picked up to be here, here, and basically a, a, a point here. If I pick up the site, you know, one foot, I might as well pick it up two foot. It doesn't really matter. The trees have to be removed, basically, that, that. You know, uh, ordinance or we, you know, uh, load required there. In addition, then we put utilities in and we have electric, gas, and everything goes on the side of the road. Well, they can't go through the tree. So, uh, I'm proposing to take the minimal amount of trees out. All over the town. And I understand, uh, now, I think, uh, you know, when we talk. Last month about the other project, it's like it had no trees, we're adding trees.
Right.
Um, that feels as uncomfortable. This feels a lot more uncomfortable, but I don't know what, you know, given the ordinance. And the requirements of every other agency, I don't really know what else to do, except replant trees. Now, the last. Kind of dwelling on, but the problem with trying to preserve some of the trees also is. If you start seeing, okay, well, we want to put pine trees back here and, and a big boxer, why have to take trees out and put pine trees in? So it's like I, you know, we kind of have to pass it through that a little bit. You know, uh, backing up a lot of the pines, you know, there might be standard trees here that can keep. We prefer to keep that. If we can keep that, then I, I think, you know, uh, we probably would like to. You know, put above perfectly, we even are selling them as much as they probably weren't above. And it's probably the same over here. You know, here, there's actually an easement where I can plant trees. You know, right up on to the property line. So I, I can't necessarily, you know, put above his own, you know, on that property line of trees.
You've got the utility just left through there.
So that's just kind of context of what I'm feeling about.
No, that was, that's helpful. I think, um, you've got a lot of ordinances and state regulations that I learned here. I think one of the things we're going to be doing here in the future is taking a look at the uh tree ordinance because it. It was meant to be flexible enough to handle a lot of different property situations, but. I think it also creates challenges. When it doesn't, yeah, when it isn't a little bit more specific in some cases. So we're going to work on that. But we don't have that done today. So, uh, I, that was one of the questions I had. Uh, I knew that would be a big one, and I'm sure that. Folks here probably have some comments. I did want to mention a couple of things, uh, just around this development and, and I, I. This is kind of in response to some of the emails. Um, this is a beautiful property. And there's a lot of, a lot of mature trees on it. One of the things we struggle with is a planning commission. Is we're trying not to develop agriculture property. Um, we're trying to, and we're trying to do as much infill as we can. Um, we kind of have a dual mandate, right? We're trying to maintain agricultural preservation at the same time. Um, we recognize there's a shortage of homes. Now, we may not feel that way here in park township, but in. Ottawa County and also in the state of Michigan, we've got a pretty severe housing shortage. So we're trying to allow for homes to be built in the right places and also protect our agricultural property, which we know from the, the. Master planning process we went, we went through how important that is to the, to the residents of Park Township. So, understand we're, we're trying to thread a needle here as well. Um. I think, um. I think, Mika, could you, the one other thing I was going to mention, and I think you probably could speak to this. There was a comment about, um. Not all residents being informed. And I think there's a specific, uh, informed of this development. And could you just speak to what the township processes for that?
Yeah, it's a state, it's a state noticing requirement. So it's the same everywhere in the state of Michigan. We notice within three hundred feet of the property. And so, uh, the way that staff does that, uh, is, uh, and I don't do it, so I'm transmitting what I've seen on somebody else's screen. But, um, the Ottawa County G I S has a program, uh, where you put in the address and then it populates outward in this bubble. And then everybody that's within the bubble gets, uh, gets a notice. And so that's, that's how that's done.
Great, thank you. So with that, um, I'll open it up to the, to the team here and see what thoughts, comments, questions, feedback you may have.
Oh, I'll start. I was hoping that you owned the property because I walked it this morning and I was hoping I wasn't going to get shot. Or a dog was going to come attack me or anything. So that's an amazing piece of property. And one of the things, Mika, that you put in your notes to us, is there anything that you see where you're just like, oh my gosh, that is absolutely beautiful? And I would say, right where you're building house number one and two, I think that's one of the most beautiful spots on that whole property. The way that it, it swells up. Now, I know you have to infill and that's really helpful to know, Mike, that that's what you need to do. But there, I mean, those trees in there are just, they're huge, they're incredible. And it almost makes a statement when you drive into that subdivision. And. My heart would just be so sad if those trees had to go to put those houses where you have one and two there. To me, you can make a really state, a good statement about tree preservation when you enter and just. I know there was another site where you had streets that were curving and it was really pretty nice because it just made it seem more natural. So I guess that would just be my challenge to you is in that area, that's, there are a lot of nice areas, but that area there to me. I'd love to see a better approach for keeping those trees in there. So that's just my personal observation.
The thoughts? Fire away.
Um, well, some of them based, um, dialogue tonight, dialogue previously. Um, my knowledge of other things that are going on in the community, I, before I pose some of these, I, I do have a question for Mika. If I can ask her to collaborate on our, if I may, chair.
Yes.
Um, we currently have a McGee unit development on the north side, but we're not.
Yes, thank you.
Um, and then a twenty unit development that currently has James just torn apart. We've got a water table issue. We've spent several thousands of dollars with our engineers assessing. And looking at how that's affecting not only that area, but the broader area. Are you able to give this team an update on, um. What the water table stands at right now and how that development is affecting not only those homes, those current ponds as well as Bowerman Blueberries?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um, I don't have the readings on the current ponds. I don't have the readings on the current pond levels in that area. Uh, I think probably engineering does, and I suspect that they're, that they're quite low. So the de-watering has been proceeding well for that utility installation in James. Um. I talked to Andrew from Bowermans yesterday and they were getting pretty concerned, um. Right before it rained this weekend. They had one of the, I think it was one of the monitoring wells that went dry. Uh, so they were starting to get concerned about, about that. Uh, they have been able to pull enough water out yet. Uh, in order to fill their irrigation ponds, they're going to be continuing to irrigate for two to four weeks yet, it sounds like. Um, and so they're, they're able to continue their operations. They don't have the water pressure that they're typically used to. But it's enough to get through. Uh, we also required the developer to provide kind of a plan B. So that if those wells did go dry, there were two parts to that. One is, one of these monitoring wells, one of the things that, that was raised as a concern was. If the, if the water runs dry, then those wells burn up when, as they're pumping, that's bad. You don't want that to happen. You can't, you can't just say, well, let it run dry and then figure it out. You need to know before that happens. So there's a monitoring wall, wells installed. And both the developer and, uh, Bowermans has been, have been watching those wells to make sure that they're where they need to stay. Uh, and then there is a plan B come in for, uh, some kind of tank that can be brought in, that can pump water from elsewhere. Uh, to be used for irrigation in the event that one of those wells did run dry. So at this point, um, as of yesterday. They're able to continue irrigating, not concerned at the moment, and there is a plan B there. Now, as far as the general water table goes. Um, we know that it's low. I don't have the specific numbers right now. We know that it's low. The drought has brought it even lower. And so that's, I mean, that's kind of the extent of, I don't have the details on that part. Um, there's also monitoring happening, as you know, around the landfill. Um, and that's been, they've been keeping an eye on that as well. They've also seen that water table in that area dropping slightly. But it's consistent with the uh drought conditions as opposed to giving any appearance of being pulled from the de-watering. So that plume is, is in place. And engineering is also keeping an eye on that.
The reason I ask is so that our board commissioners get an update and have an understanding of what. Um, potential development can do with surrounding areas and I don't necessarily know. The engineers may not even know what it takes to raise all those water tables and kind of reverse. We don't control mother nature either, so.
Tom and I did talk about this afternoon with this specific development. Did you want me to give any thoughts on this? Not as, or you have some, yeah.
Proposed development is self-easier. Our current issues. Will this, yeah, I would like to know, would developing this cause further issue or not?
Mm-hmm. Speaking as not an engineer, so just to be clear on that, this is based on my experience with the other developments in the area. But, um, no hydrogeology experience. You're, when you're do, I don't know how deep, and maybe you guys know this already, how deep that, that pipe is going to be. Uh, when they start putting in the utilities in the street, that's going to determine typically how much de-watering that you're doing and how far you're going into the water table. So the de-watering for, uh, James Street in particular, that's a twenty-foot pipe. Um, that's a really, really deep de-watering project. That's pretty unusual. Uh, that, they're not going to be going that deep. There could be some impact on Waterway Pines, because the groundwater in this area does flow from east to west. I would expect to see a drop in that water level temporarily. Uh, and then it does just depend on rain. So the reason why those levels have stayed so low is that there hasn't been any recharge of the groundwater coming from the sky. So unlike in a clay area where you might set kind of see ponds as bowls that are getting a lot of runoff. Because we're so sandy, all of these ponds are groundwater level ponds. So they just reflect what's underneath the earth. There might be a little bit of difference, but that, that's typically what they see.
Anybody have a question?
We had that conversation earlier today, so.
Okay.
For a non-hydrogeologist, that was pretty good.
Um. It was mentioned about conflict between the drain commission and our tree preservation and other organizations that need to. Have been, uh, how this is development, how potential development would go, um. It just doesn't sit right with me that we don't have an understanding of more things prior to saying, hey, yeah, go and build. My opinion is we still need to get an understanding of how our current developments are affecting. Areas before we move forward if anything. Um, we just approved this builder's south side development and, um, I know he doesn't build. Inexpensive housing whatsoever, so part of our goal is a part of affordable housing and affordable is, um. Debatable and everybody's own opinion. But like the south side with the neighborhood of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses, I expect that that's what the price of these condos are also going to be. Um. I'll bring up the tree ordinance again. I really struggled with clear cutting to just replace planting elsewhere according to the four to one ratio. You know, maybe that's something that can be looked at for the future, but it's not going to help us right now. And, um. I just don't like clearing the trees because you can't get a bulldozer around one. With regard to density, and this is going to be an important statement for myself, um. The property may be zoned for what the developer may want to put there. But because we have a formula that can calculate the maximum amount of units to put on a parcel. Doesn't mean we have to develop the snap method.
Thank you.
Yes, in inferior, um, that, that's very important to me. I mean. You brought up sites, the one and two had beautiful trees. You know what? Don't build houses one and two. Reduce. What you can. I know you want to maximize, I know the builder wants to maximize profit. Build beautiful homes or condos, put as many on the site as possible. And I just keep staring at that map there. Cause that just, it's kind of harder for me. So at this point, I, I just don't think it's the right time for a number of reasons to develop this property. And, um, I'm not in support of it. I'll come on and say that right.
Um, I visited the site on, um, Tuesday. And I, I'm just going to read the notes I made, uh, at the site because they generate, they're the basis of the questions I'm going to be asking. Mr. Bossgraph, uh, and maybe for those of you who haven't visited the site, this will be helpful. Uh, the south half of the property is studded with mature white pines. The south is on the lower end there. Uh, it's rolling topography with upslopes and swales. It has a very open forest floor because it's all mature white pines, so it's perfect for a park-style natural surface walking trail. There are a couple of spots of midlife swamp white oaks mixed in with those mature white pines. I noted that the north side has a two tracker running all the way to the western boundary. Now, I'm assuming that that's the easement you were referring to. Uh, but unusually, both sides of that are thick with northern Catalpa. Uh, and I have not seen that many northern Catalpa trees in one place, uh, any place in the township before. It's, it's usually a common single tree. It's got the big, long seed pods that look like a big green bean. And, and that whole north side, uh, has lots of them. Um, there's some history there, I'm sure, as to how they got there, because they didn't, they didn't get there all naturally. Um, those pods are food for squirrels and goldfinches, uh, in particular, but they are ignored by deer. So those, those deer look, the, the deer are not eating any of those green beans. The, uh, the middle strip of the acreage has an understory of young white pine under spruce and maple overstory. And this is what would be lost in the development, that strip right down the middle. There are two specimen red oaks in a swale west of the existing house, about a hundred and fifty yards out. Uh, I went back and looked in the lot, that would be about lots four and five. And my guess is they are probably where Twin Oaks Court off Bentwood Court got its name. Because it's pointing that, that, uh, Twin Oaks Court is going right at those trees. So, um, again, there are lots four or five. Can we save them? They're gorgeous trees. Uh, this being a twenty, twenty home requested development, I noted, I drove Bentwood Court counted, has twenty homes. Jill Louise Court has twelve homes. Uh, so the twenty homes is not.
Seventeen.
But Bentwood Court?
Yeah.
Do you not count the two that are right up at the head of the street? I, that, I was curious about that. The, the front one fifty second? No. Seventeen. Uh, the, the property north of the acreage is zoned agricultural, but I saw no signs of any agricultural activities. Um, that was just a note. It looked, the forest cover matched it the same as, as this lot. So here's, here's the questions I came up with. If the landscape, the landscape plan is based on a tree representing 1600 square feet, that's a 40 by 40 plot, then shouldn't the tree buffer line along the four border, bo- borders, excuse me, should be a minimum of 40 feet? If you're, I mean, that, we use 1600 as a calculation for what a mature tree covers. Well, we ought to make sure our tree buffer has adequate width for a tree to grow to maturity that are already there, by the way, in, in the uh, southern border. So that was a comment. How, and, and I think you have a 30 foot in your
Scale today?
Thirty, yeah. I'd, I'd, I'd recommend looking at 40 as a possibility if you're going to use the 1600 as your, as your bogus number. The perimeter tree buffer seems like a, a very nice place as an amenity to have a natural forest trail. For the dog walkers, you know, from our last one, I'm always after uh, places to walk your dog. Uh, just especially on that south side, that's just gorgeous ground to uh, to have a path. Not paved, not anything like that, but just uh, kept cleaned off. The last one, uh, the tree replacement plan uh, on L100 includes 19 Cleveland select pears. That is an invasive species in Michigan. Yeah. Might I suggest, uh, if, if, I also know that they're very showy and beautiful. So I would suggest looking at red bud or flowering dogwood. Both of those are native to Michigan. Or if you want to honor the Wintersteins, replace those uh, pear placements with lindens, which will bring in pollinators. I, you can tell that growing uh, stocked fruit was a, uh, it was a big deal on that place. Lindens are gorgeous shade tree and bring pollinators galore. And it's a native tree. It's also known as a basswood, if you need to look that up. That's all I have.
Wow.
Straight expert. I admire your knowledge.
Thanks. Yeah, very, very good detail and also recommendations on the, on that particular invasive. Oh, you started this side. I'm going this way. Okay.
I'm going to tickle. I can't get rid of.
Let me give you some time.
Well, I'm torn. Uh, it seems that we're at cross purposes. Um, the housing shortage. I know these are expensive condos. But all homes in this township are pushing the limit in terms of affordability. And so I don't think this is any different. And, and so the, the reason I'm torn is if I were a developer, I would feel that I was really being infringed on. You know, I purchased the property and I'm trying to do my best to uh, you know, make a living and uh, I have expertise in how to do this. And yet I'm being restrained based on aesthetics. Uh, so I'm, I'm very torn. Um, I need to go over and look at the property, but um, unless the developer would make some concessions that more adequately address uh, Commissioner Bourbon and um, Commissioner Clark, then I would listen to that, hoping that we might be able to come to some compromise.
I, I guess I would ask for those, um, for those that are, it sounds like may not be fully supportive at this point. Are there specific things you'd like to see from the, from the developer? That would make you more comfortable or potentially similar?
Um, Mr. Chair, before we do that, should I just make a comment? So one of the things that's different about this development than some that we've reviewed lately, we've reviewed a lot of planned unit developments recently. And in those, there's a lot of discretion and a lot of ability to bend and a lot of ability to ask for concessions to say, you're going to get this exclusion from the ordinance and so we're going to ask you to do that. In this case, this is just a straight site condominium. So the, the area where you have some discretion is within the tree preservation ordinance, kind of within as the ordinance is written. Uh, you can establish a buffer. You can ask about tree stands. You can look for preservation of canopy. And so those things are very clearly within the ordinance, something that you can, that you can look at. Um, the ordinance does talk about tree removal being something that you, you need to be able to install the infrastructure and remove the trees. And that's, that's the trick. I mean, even when you are building houses, you, you're going to have to take out the trees. It, and that's just a difficulty of it. So this is zoned R3. It's master, master plan for this density of development. And so um, that, that part of it is, is by right and that for that piece of it, your role is to kind of look at the requirements and say, yep, check, check, check. That meets requirements. And, and that's what that piece of it is. So really it's the kind of the tree preservation is the area that you have a little bit of discretion on. Yeah.
Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate, we've had a lot of PUDs. Um, well, I guess based on what you're saying, it really sounds like, you know, we get comments from everybody uh, on the commission and that it really is a case of going through the standards. All right. Steph, are you?
I'm, uh, well, for now. Yes. Um, I was actually going to clarify, Amika uh, did that for us. So um, because that, that was my understanding when we were reviewing it is that it's going to happen um, be, because it, it's following our existing ordinances and, and we have, we have to follow our ordinances. It is, it is what it is. Um, I think the, the level of detail and even the assessment that um, Mr. Bourbon uh, brought back to us, uh, especially, you know, leveraging his own personal expertise of, you know, the um, trees that are on the property. I think is, is very helpful. Um, and especially, you know, some of the specific, um, you know, callouts as, as it relates to um, the area where we do have some flexibility. Um, I would say in general, otherwise, again, it's, it's following the zone plan. It's following our ordinances as it relates to the rest of the standards and looking, looking through the packet. Um, it is what it is. We can have opinions on, you know, is, is the time right? Is, is the price point right? All that other stuff, but but it's not really within our control or anything we can do. So I don't really have much else to add there um, other than I guess maybe if we can go back to um, specifically the tree preservation um, section. Um, and I'd love to incorporate, I think, some of the specifics, um, because he clearly has an eye, not only for, you know, appreciating the, the trees and the canopy, but, but being able to, you know, even articulate and uh, provide specific direction to uh, some of the particular trees, even based on species. Um, that we may be able to provide as, you know, some of that more specific feedback um, to this team.
Well, I think I heard some of those in terms of some of the recommendations around some of the species. Or some maybe not to, not to consider.
Well, my, my big recommendation was making it a 40 foot buffer. Just be, because um, a 30 foot buffer will take out quite a few of those gorgeous white pines along the southern boundary. But a 40 foot buffer will keep at least most of them along the Bentwood Court backyard. So, so again, the question, I, I don't know if there's 40 feet available at the rear side of, of the retention pond. It's, I hate calling it pond because it's just going to be a dry place most of the time. But acknowledging that trees have to be removed um, to develop the property. Our only chance of saving trees, mature trees is along the borders. So if it's possible, uh, I'd like to see a 40 foot buffer rather than 30. And I hope that the pears will go away.
Other thoughts? Something that, that Shar said that.
And I like, well, when I look at a plan, I mean, the first thing you look at, you see buffers. So you go, good, you know, you've got buffers and you're doing what you need to do. And the thing that always grabs me is, is just the site is maximized. And one of the things you said is it just looks like it's just getting as much as we can in here because it's more money for the developer. Sorry.
Don't apologize.
I, what I really want to see is like, you know what? We, 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 we didn't put a house here or else we put a, a bigger gap in between these houses because we were able to save this big pine tree. And so to me, I'm an architect. One of the first things we learn is that you design to the landscape and you don't clear cut. And so that, we were always graded on how well we did based upon how we could preserve the nature, the natural flow of the land and keep that beautiful. So I always look at that and it just feels maximized and it doesn't feel like it's sensitive to the beautiful sight that it really is. So that's what I would like to see is a less dense site with some sensitivity to the beauty that's there.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, in, in uh, walking the property today too, I think the, the estimate that you guys wrote for the number of trees there. I think that that's the way of all, it is a lot of trees there. Um, and I, and I think it would be, in addition to what Lynn and Articulated, I think it would be um, nice of some of the, some of the premier trinkets, let's play. It's a nice one to have in front there to be preserved. And they said, oh, it's a true tree in backyard. And I understand that anybody can build around the tree and activate around the tree, but they can make a free preservation that's, that's well qualified.
Well, at this point, uh, I think this is the point where we typically go through the standards, is it not, Dennis? The standards?
Um, Mr. Chair, if, if there are changes that the planning commission would like to see based on the tree preservation ordinance, um, that's something that you would want to include in the approval. So you can go through the standards. Um, but I think that what you would probably want to do, if you're looking for specific changes based on that standard, would be to have the developer bring that back. So they could say, rather than just a suggestion of please try to do this, you could say, okay, let's look at what this is here and this is here. Um, and especially if you're talking about something along the lines of an expansion of the buffer. Um, they would have to look at that and I think that they would probably have to see if that was viable and where that was viable. And we want to make sure that that, that everyone is aligned on what exactly that would mean. So you could go through the standards to mainly to see, is there anything else that you would want to? Um, otherwise can kind of approve and say, yep, looks good based on, you know, X condition. Um, or, you know, send on to the next stage based on X condition, but otherwise would, would want to clarify that and, and give that feedback. So you can take a look at it again.
Let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and run through the standards and see if there's anything else that jumps out at us. Dennis, can you take us through those? They're in the, uh, here we go. They're actually in the uh, they're in the document, uh, so right here.
All right. Relative to the site plan review standards, in order to comply with the site plan standard section 38103. The first standard would be the adequate and legally applied for the site dependent use. And that standard is met is enough to get requirement and it's enforced. Second standard is that all required information has been divided. And uh, that standard has been met as well. The proposed development informs all regulations of the zoning district in which it's located. And as we heard, standard was met. We're talking about our three zoning district. And um, um, it is consistent with the proposed development plan. Fourth standard is the adequacy of streets, alleys, parking areas, loading zones, sidewalks, drainage, water and sewer lines, and traffic control for the proposed used building and structures. And that standard is met. The fifth uh, is the adequacy of protection of the affordable lands and surrounding neighborhood for, or stem fat. That standard is met. The sixth would be that all elements in the site plan shall be harmoniously and efficiently organized in relation to topography, the size type of the lot and the territory of adjoining properties and the size and size of buildings. Site shall be so developed as not impede the normal and orderly development of improvement of surrounding properties for less permanent uh, use in this check. And this standard can also be met. The proposed topography, the parcel sizes, development type is consistent with adjoining neighborhoods to the south. Seventh standard is that the landscape shall be preserved in its natural state insofar as practical. By minimizing tree and soil removal and by topographic modifications which result in maximum harmony with adjacent areas. Now, this standard is generally met. We've had a long discussion here tonight about how it could be um, conditioned. The dimensions of this parcel in combination with infrastructure and drainage requirements make extensive preservation of natural features there in channeling. That intuition uh, as discussed and will need to discuss this third. Number eight. Natural resources will be preserved and protected to the maximum phase of the set. And organic, wet or other soils which are not suitable for development for younger, undisturbed although be modified in an acceptable manner. This standard is generally met. Uh, with comments similar to those above. Uh, there are no wetlands on the property. The ninth standard would be the proposed development will not cause soil erosion or sedimentation problem. This standard is met. Soil erosion and sedimentation controlled for this issued by the hollow town resources commission uh, will be required. Ten, the drainage plan for the proposed development is adequate to handle the stage stormwater drain up and will not cause undews. Standard appears to be met. Township engineer has looked at the plan. Uh, and the other uh, county board. And the other county water running. As we did.
I'm going to take it from there and give you a breather?
No. Number eleven. The proposed development properly reflects floodways. And floodplains or in the vicinity of the subject property. And in this case, it wasn't applicable. And therefore, isn't standard is required. Number twelve, plan meets the specifications of our township for water supplies, source and small water treatment. Smart drainage and other public facilities. This standard is met partially adjacent to municipal water and wastewater lines. Standard thirteen, with respect to the it can work and pedestrian circulation on the site. Including walkways, interior drives and parking. Special attention shall be given to the location, number and spacing. Of the access points, general interior circulation. Separation industry and effectively traffic. And the arrangement of parking areas that are safe and convenient. And since the bar is practical. Do not contract the design. Of the proposed buildings and structures. Nature of properties and flow of traffic on the adjacent streets. This standard is met. There's a subpass on one hundred and fifty second adjacent to the proposed development that will be modified if needed. And the internal five ones have not been proposed. But this will be very low volume street. And this is consistent with existing neighborhood in the south. Standard fourteen, all buildings or groups of buildings shall be so arranged as to prevent emergency vehicle access. By some practical means as required by township fire department. This standard has been met. Proposed as a single family development with a colored road, so a lot of the colored road commission standards also apply. Fifteen, site plan shall provide reasonable visual and sound privacy for all dwelling units located there. Once this walks barriers and landscaping shall be used as appropriate for the protection and enhancement. Property and for the privacy of occupants. And this standard is met. The surrounding uses of residential and similar densities to proposed use. Landscape buffers have been included in the plan. Sixteen. All loading and unloading areas and outside storage and materials. Which face or are visible from residential districts or public thoroughfares shall be screened. By a voting screen consisting of structural or flat interiors. Also, outdoor storage of garbage and refuse shall be contained, screened from view and located so as not to be. Subdues to the subject property or any birth of properties. This is not necessarily applicable with the list of both.
That's a commercial.
Standard seventeen. All lighting shall be met meet the requirements of section thirty four D A P. On which require shielding so as to reflect the light downward and away from the joint boundaries. Be shielded from any public water effects. This standard is met, lighting is not correctly proposed. Eighteen. Basis of development or modular sequence so that any case will not depend upon. The subsequent phase for adequate access to public. Services drainage or erosion control. This standard is met. It's the single state of both. And finally, nineteen. Site plan shall be given. All applicable requirements of state and federal state statutes. And approval may be conditioned on the applicants receiving necessary state and federal permits before building permit. Or occupancy permit. Is granted. And that standard has been met as well.
Very good. Thank you. Staff has provided some additional recommendations in order to. For approval to be granted, and I think we've had a couple that we've would like to add on to that, one being the forty foot buffer. And the other for any native trees to be prioritized and replace any certainly invasives, but any non-native trees. With those, with those changes, the recommendations that we have from staff are. The Ottawa County Resource Detailed Analysis uncovers any possible deleterious effects on the surrounding neighborhood developers to work with township staff. On a satisfactory resolution that protects the neighborhood and overall stormwater system. The second is that applicant must receive final approval on all technical components of plan from the Ottawa County Water Resources Commission. The Ottawa County Road Commission, the Holland Board of Public Works and the Holland Charter Township Public Works Department. And provide township with documentation confirming these approvals prior to start of construction. Four thirty-three drainage district in agreement must be finalized. And the last is any change to the site plan. As a result of requirements of outside agencies or for any other reason must be reviewed and approved. By either the planning commission or staff in accordance with section eighty-eight, one oh eight of the part township code of ordinances. So with those recommendations and the additional ones that we have around the buffer and the tree choice. Are there any other things that we would like to add to conditions regarding tree preservation?
I would propose just looking at the density of the development to. To save any of the really nice trees that can be saved.
With that, I'm ready to ask, it's like we're ready to say something.
I just wonder if it's appropriate to have the developer respond to what. He has heard from the commission tonight. Before we move further.
I think it is.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Try to clarify address them. You know, again, I appreciate everybody's comments because it is a struggle and. You know, the context again keeps coming up of what we're bound by. So. You know, this is not a P U D. So, you know, we're not really giving and taking here. We're kind of trying to fit your ordinance. We're not trying to fit a condominium ordinance and we don't, you know, I appreciate, you know, the architect, you know. Education, you know, with it also comes the engineering education that it's like we're following ordinance. So we're following ordinance here and we don't have the ability not to follow the ordinance. So we, you know, we're kind of struggled here. You know, we, you're asking in context for a forty foot buffer zone. The problem I have with the buffer zone is that I'm losing space that I don't think I can lose the space. Now, your ordinance puts me forty feet off the road. So, you know, there's really not give and take. You know, if I go thirty feet or thirty-five feet off the road, I get a, you know, I could possibly fit more buffer. Right up until the point that, you know, we have to get some drainage lines in there and then I'm stuck again by ordinance. Or restrictions. So I don't, yeah, I don't know that I can make a, well, I know I can't make a forty foot easement work. As far as the trees go, you know, we're going to fight this tree ordinance, you know, and I think that's what we're left. Fighting and I think I, you know. The way I'm interpreting it, interpreting it is I have the right to do what I have to do for infrastructure. So. I'm there. What I'm trying to do is do what's right for the project. Yes, I'm a developer. I make money developing and building. I'm also trying to raise the value of, you know, the amenity and trees are certainly amenity. So I'm not trying, it's. I'm being portrayed like I hate trees and I don't hate trees. I'd like, you know, I think we have to concentrate on what I can put back and what I can save. What I can put back. The funny thing about, you know, the trees we keep suggesting on these plans is I suggest them. Somebody with more expertise wants something different. And then I put it on the next set of plans and the next group says, you know, they don't like it. So I'm pretty sure the three trees I just put in here. I put in from another development that I just went through and they changed the trees on me. So I haven't, I haven't. I don't care what trees we put there. If you want to, Dan, if you want to suggest, you know, three trees. I'm great with those three trees and we'll put them through the development. In fact, I'd welcome. You know, that conversation because I'm not a tree expert. I just keep putting on the plan. What people keep telling me to put on it. And I, you know, there's not a cost difference. There's, you know, sometimes it's hard to get a tree. And sometimes, you know, it's an invasive species and, you know, they're not around or they're, you know, they're not getting encouraged. So, you know, I think as part of this recommendation, if you want to put. Three trees or, you know, as many trees as you want varieties into the recommendation, I'm all for it. I'd welcome that. I can, you know, as part, you know, one thing we probably still have that we can probably offer. Is as part of this, we're going to record a master date and bylaws. As that I can put in there that. You know, after we build the house and we get into landscaping. That's some additional trees to be put in. It's hard to put them in ahead of time because you don't know where everything goes, but. We certainly did it at, you know, Silver Ridge as an example, just online, we added one pine tree, one deciduous tree. Twenty years later. It looks pretty good. We already have those street trees, but, you know, I can start adding, you know, a tree in the back, a tree in the front, ask for, you know, the bylaws and restrictions. And that would get you the number of trees up outside of your ordinance and probably outside of your. You know, you know, really probably what. The tree ordinance talks about. You know, the context, you know, again, maybe my last statement is. You know. You know, you're pushing development. Down, you know, South James and you're trying to put a buffer zone or. Preservation. Every time you take a site out of these developments, somebody's going to take a two acre or five acre site out of agricultural. It's just the way it's going. So I, you know, if you're going to stay. You know, south of James, north of thirty-second on the north side. You're going to have to follow your ordinance or change your ordinance and probably increase density. Trying to think what else. You know. Waterway, pine, Silver Ridge. You know, they were also wooded. One was a pine, Christmas tree fact or Silver Ridge, we gave away Christmas trees for quite a while, but half of it was also wooded. We took two houses out. And it was, you know, heavily wooded on the south side. So we're trying to follow your ordinance. I think we followed it all the way through, got stuck on three ordinance. I don't know that we can, you know. You know, die on that, you know, ordinance. You know, because I, I think we've got to look at what we can do. To put it back because your ordinances and the county is just. To put the improvements in, we got to take the trees.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, Mr. Boskref, what I'm hearing you say is the problem is the township's ordinances and you're throwing it back on us. That's what I feel like right now. And that we shouldn't die on the hill of tree preservation. Those were two things that really stuck out to me and what you've just reiterated to. Our commissioner. And team, I'll stand by this. It's not the right time for this development and with the. Insurmountable issues that you have. Stressed and stated. Maybe this property is just not available for you.
Well, I think at this point. I don't know if you want to, I'm not sure you want to respond to that.
I wanted to make a statement.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, again, I, I think we're both. You know. A little aggressive in our statements. I certainly was. What I, if I hadn't clarified. I am being asked to follow an ordinance both at the township level, which I followed all the way through to the letter. I'm also asked to follow the drain commissioner. The road commissions. Utility companies. And I followed those to the letter of the laws. And in fact, I don't have any influence over any of that. So I, I, I have done everything I've been asked to do. Was my point. I think my other point about trees is. It's coming down to the tree ordinance. As the last thing and. That's where we're kind of stuck.
Mr. Chair, if I may. In addition to needing to bump up our review of the tree ordinance. So. One of, one of the areas where we do have some. Opportunity to be more prescriptive. Specifically is with regards to specific. Stands of trees. I know we've required it in the past. For other developments. I don't know if it's. An option here to have that official. Study done and mapping the trees to specifically identify. Trees that we determine as a tree stand must remain.
In terms of it, yeah.
Rather than having a, yes, rather than having a blanket forty foot buffer. If there are particular tree stands that are more impactful. And able to be retained. I, if that's within our purview rather than than a blanket forty foot, I would prefer to go down that path. I, I can't say for sure. I have been through Silver Ridge. Quite a bit and. There's definitely an occasional property where it does appear that even on. An individual parcel, there have been what would have been at the time a very small stand of trees. That were retained. Rather than. Even having, you know, an individual tree replanted. I will say, I do think years down the line. Silver Ridge in comparison does look, you know, pretty nice with regards to the trees that are in the neighborhood. Health of some of them is questionable, but that's a different issue. But that if, if permissible would be a path that I would. Like us to explore, but then we would. The action from that is that we would need to be very prescriptive in the specific trees. That we would wish to be specifically retained, you know, based on size and health. In consideration to the rest of the plan, because I, I'm. Willing to bet that, you know, once, once you get into it, right? Some of those trees may end up being not as healthy as. You hope.
So. Our options. We can, we're, we're either approving. We're denying or can we ask for? A tree inventory? Because that would be in the purview of the tree preservation.
It would be. The full tree inventory is a lot and we've done it before. So, you know, it's, it's doable. Given the nature of the site, just the knowledge that we know that there's a bunch of stuff that's going to have to be taken out there. I don't know that you necessarily would need to require a full inventory, but specifically. Seeing if they can identify stance of trees that could remain. And I think I. I'd like to hear their thoughts on that as well, if that's viable, but that seems like a viable. I'd like to hear their thoughts on that as well, if that's viable, but that seems like a viable thing. And especially my concern, looking at, we don't want to just see a plan on paper. You know, it it needs to fit with what actually has to go in there. So to 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 understand a little more clearly what stands of trees. Might be able to remain and even to prioritize those if possible during the development, I think that could be helpful.
I'm actually recalling a a very similar exercise with another development on the south side where the architectural firm actually they had sizes of trees and and uh healthy and unhealthy. And I think for a site like this that has such amazing trees, we really need to go to that level to make sure we're we're doing the best we can for the developer. But also for our tree preservation.
Any feedback or thoughts on that? I think we're we're struggling here too, because I think, yeah, I mean, I.
I I, you know, we're gonna get right back to.
My concern, would you be able to approach?
You know, we did it for Shorewood. Context, again, I I hate to keep bringing it up, but. Shorewood Townhomes. I came into this organization, different people. Three years ago and I asked for, I believe, seven single family home sites on this site. And I was given no flexibility. Uh, by ordinance and they're like, and it was basically, uh, we needed storm water, we needed everything and. Uh, basically took a couple of sites out and the economics. You know, we're not going in the right direction. I look back at the ordinance and go, well, it's zone for apartments. Condominiums and single family. It's like, okay, by rights. I was almost forced into townhomes, which was a great thing because, you know, we did well, we're doing well on First Avenue with townhomes, but we got twenty nine of them. We did a tree ordinance. Now. We went out and counted the trees. And basically we held to the tree ordinance then and said, okay. We got a healthy tree, we've got a dead tree, we've got a healthy tree, we've got a dead tree. A lot of those trees were dead trees. And, you know, the healthy trees were in the wrong spot. For what we're allowed to have infrastructure. So then it became almost easier on our behalf of saying, okay. We, you know, we gotta take out four trees, we give you one tree and it the tree ordinance went away. I I think what I'm trying to offer. Is the inevitable is, you know, at the end of the day. We have to take trees out. Where infrastructure is going. I I'm not proposing taking trees out anywhere where infrastructure is not going. So I think we're gonna end up at. We're allowed to take trees out wherever there's infrastructure going in. And that that does include, you know, minimums, storm drains, storm retention, you know, roads and utilities. I think I'm offering probably more trees for about a more viable option. By working with you in advance. And trying to put trees in the right location and the right kind of trees in the right location. That's, I guess, what my thoughts are.
I, from a, I, we, I know we've had this discussion before, you know, purely economic standpoint, it's a whole lot easier to leave great trees in place than having to have to take them out and replant something. So, and I, and I know from a aesthetic perspective, you want to leave the. Greatest majority of great looking trees as you can as well.
Rest of the houses.
Mr. Chairman, uh. May I approach this from sort of opposite way of taking an entire twelve acre tree inventory? And I think one of our last reviews, Len. I mean, I I'm I'm not hung up on thirty feet or forty feet. What I'm hung up on is I don't know. What your, your development is going to do to all the white pines along that south side. So if. If you would do a tree inventory of what would be left, what would be untouched. With a thirty foot buffer, it would be a whole. Lot easier for me to make a, uh. A pronouncement of, well, why not a forty foot buffer? Because it takes sixteen hundred square feet for a mature tree. Like you talked the last time, what? What is going to be left? And then we can, then we can talk about it, but I. But it it's hard for me to to envision. Forty feet might not even take another. Tree out and you might, they might all be within the thirty feet, but we don't know that.
Yeah, I appreciate that thought. So going on that thought for a minute. You know, we can probably get, you know. To the forty feet. I am desperately trying to hang on. To what I need to build. You know. I believe you can grant me a deviation to the setback requirement from the front row. Those trees are gone anyways. So if I can get a setback to, let's just say thirty five feet. Can I do the forty feet in the back? I preserve the five feet, you know, I I'm five, ten feet, probably is not gonna make a difference. So if we're, if we're getting hung up. Hung up is maybe not the right word, but if we're stuck on the forty feet versus thirty feet. I think there's a, there's an avenue to get to forty feet.
But but I'm not sure the forty feet is is. Is there's any reason for it? What what does thirty feet, what what does thirty feet leave of the trees that are there? Uh, why, what would the inventory be of the thirty foot buffer? That you want, or that would be very helpful in. Making me be quiet.
Yeah, I, uh. I I don't have a problem, but I'm just, I'm trying to think. So if we go into the thirty feet. And there's some trees that are of value there, we've already promised to keep them. So if we go to forty feet, it's even better. Right? So if I if I count the trees. So we go do a tree study. And we look at all the trees on the forty foot strip or a thirty foot strip. And there's a bunch of beautiful trees along the thirty foot strip. We've already said we're, we'll keep those. So I'm counting them. But we're keeping them anyways.
You're you're counting them and you're also counting if it was forty feet.
Oh, okay. So this forty.
Yeah, if if. If we get five more trees between thirty and forty foot, well, let's go, then the thirty foot's easy. To be positive about. But but yeah, but if in that last ten feet, you're taking out. Twenty hundred year old white pines. Then I, that's, that's what I, what we don't know. We're trying to make a decision. Without enough information.
Sorry, suggesting a tree study. Forty feet around the perimeter of the property?
Yeah, I guess so. I it. I am most concerned about the southern border.
I I can give you the tree study probably on the northern border. Because that's where that easement already been through.
Right, right.
And that's a thirty foot easement. And if I planted trees there, I'm not allowed.
Right, right, yeah.
So that's probably a, so you're right. It's basically backing up to the condominiums.
And the, and the, yeah. So it's, yeah, it's sort of. Tell me what, what you're committed to in thirty feet and what would forty feet? Get and what? We don't know what the difference would be.
Just clarifying your ask. It's just the southern. Border of the property. Forty feet.
Yeah, to to his point, on the, on the northern border, there's a two tracker and 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 scrub trees. Um, along there and it's good and you can't put anything where the two tracker is. So, yeah, that would be the western border and the southern border. That's where the.
So so you want the western border too? So western and southern, just other.
Yeah. Tell us what would be there at thirty feet.
Yeah, I'm I'm, I'm, yeah, totally good with that. I just wanted clarification if it was only the southern. And you're saying southern and western.
Yes.
Makes sense to me.
So we'd be asking. The developer to come back with that. So for tonight, we would be tabling. Okay. I guess at this point, is there any other discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to, well, entertain a motion and let you make it. But it sounds like we want to table this for the tree study.
Any fair, oh, thank you.
Sure.
What happens if we're just giving them forty foot easement? Are we done everywhere else? I I I, we're, we're gonna spend a lot of energy doing the tree studying. Would I be better off? Just giving the forty foot? To the south. And to the west.
Those are the two main areas, I think.
You know, those are more. We could shift, well, not shift, but we we can probably make that work, I think. There's a, there's a small drain. Here, right?
So we we need to rebuild some backyard, is all we need to do. So, um, we have a fifty foot backyard set up or set back. You know, if we're, if we're providing forty foot buffer. You know, we 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 can't really slide, we can't really put a pump in there. We can grade in here and achieve that drainage here. We can probably provide forty foot off the same thing as we are. Here we're well on it. So, you know, this is basically kind of a normal buffer or I assume a normal easement will be just twenty foot drainage, then green that thirty foot. Utility easement. But if those are the two main areas of concern. Um, outside of a little pocket here, I mean, we can. And if there's a particular tree, we can probably, but. If we, if it's, um, along the western and southern edge, I think. Here's our northern utility, he's been along the south here. Um, we have a couple of areas where we just need to pick up some drains, but the natural topography is such, so if we can probably. But she didn't without putting a lot of like infrastructure in the ground.
Show them where that.
Yeah, so there's a little drainage here and this storm water will be picked up here and have more than a little and then back out to the. So the same thing a little hot here, so, um, we really, you can probably provide greater and all for it, which is there. And so we still need a couple of spots to pick it up, but I think instead of doing that. Instead, everybody's interested, I mean, we don't need the chain of vibration here or anything here. Uh, to try to save those trees, but, you know, we just want to be able to have tools and tool lines. To be able to, uh, you know, issue the the requirements that we couldn't accomplish that in yearly.
Okay, well, we have, we have an agreement to, to. Make an effort. In each case, um, the west and southern borders, did we repeat the first book? This pension.
So, Mr. Chair, are you looking for a motion?
I I am at this point looking for a motion.
I I can, I can give it a try.
I heard of the last one together.
Right, so I'll make a motion to approve with conditions. The conditions would be. A forty foot, um, buffer for the trees on the western and southern borders. Um, and then the three conditions outlined by staff, um, that require, uh, Ottawa County Water Resource. Um, analysis, um. Final approval on the technical components, uh, from. Uh, Ottawa County Water Resource Commission, Road Commission, Holland Board of Public Works, uh. Ho- uh, Holland Charter Township Board of Public Works, um, and then any change to the site plan as a result. Um, of outside agencies for other reasons must be reviewed and approved by planning commission or staff. Um, in accordance with thirty eight, one oh eight.
Thank you. I will second.
And that's a recommendation to the, just to.
That's a recommendation to the, to the board for. Right, yeah, we don't, we, you know, we don't get to approve, we recommend it for approval. Any other discussion? If not. We'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Better do a roll call.
Yeah, we better do a roll call. Okay. Mr. Eve?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So it's approved. For recommendation to the board. Thank you, everybody.
Uh-huh.
We were at meetings and that's how we came. But I I believe we had additional information, we put a base of similar.
We weren't allowed to ask any questions.
I'm still learning. Yes, and I never.
This still, yes, still needs to be approved by the.
These are all, they're they're online and they're also available. You can come to the front desk of the township office and you can come just view them anytime. They'll be up there. What's that?
Online where?
So. Yeah, they're.
You go to planning committee, yeah, planning permission site, uh, in the part township website. There is links to, uh, past meetings and also minutes for the upcoming. Yes.
Yeah, so if you, the website, there's headings on the top. One of them is our township. Underneath that is planning commission and there'll be agendas and minutes. That's, that's the section to look for. It's there, it was there.
They're always there.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're posted a week before, a week before the meeting.
I don't think we should approve any of these things of the week of the free. And the week I've got, so we have, because I mean, we can do so much better.
We had certain requirements we had to follow. They weren't township.
They weren't like, these, the, you know, but never, waiting those that. Materials that had to be used. And so we had options.
You know, all kinds of. Yeah, not only have something nice of this fast. You know, thirty seven hundred, ten thousand dollar, most of it will be now.
Yeah, we're still, we've got to, uh, bring the public hearing to a close and. Move on with the meeting, so, thank you, folks.
Thanks for talking. Appreciate it.
All right. To that, I need a, I need a, uh, motion to close the public hearing. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
I don't think so.